Any declarations of conflict of interest?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Mr. McKeown, he's our active C A O. So were there any requests for changes to the agenda, Mr. McKeown?
Not at the moment.
Okay. So approve of the agenda? Moved by Councilor Duffy, seconded by Councilor Ramsey. All in favor? Okay. Adoption of previous draft minutes. So we have the regular meeting of August 9th. Special meetings open August 23rd, 26th, and 30th. 30th, public meeting August 24th. Motion to approve them? Moved by Councilor Ramsey. Seconded by Councilor Bernard. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any business arriving? Air up the minutes.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Okay. So Chair, Councilor Terry McLeod, did you want to start it off? Mr. Forbes is here.
Yeah, sure. Thank you very much, Your Worship. Good evening, everyone. Planning and Heritage Committee met on August 6th. Copy of the Planning and Heritage Committee meetings are included in the package. The Planning Board met on Tuesday, September 7th. Copies of that is in the package. Minutes for September 7th. Public meeting minutes are there as well. And the reports for the resolutions to come forward. The Heritage Board did not meet in August, and the planning group did not meet, and the adorable housing did not meet in August. I have eight resolutions to put forward, and I'll try and answer any questions I have. Thank you.
And you have Mr. Forbes here. You want to yield to him soon? Councilor Rivera?
Your Worship, sorry, when you're going through the protocol, one thing I did notice on the conflict of interest, I noticed the 199 draft of three, even though the applicants are Patrick Morrison and Jamie Holland, it says, it does say your applicant is A P M. So I will excuse myself from there.
Okay. But it is Pat Morrison's project, isn't it?
It is, but yeah, his A P M, so I'm going to remove myself from...
I'm going to remove myself too. Okay.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Councilor Twill? Just speak loud, and just next time, Councilor Rivera, please stand up and just speak loud enough so she can hear.
Cheers.
Go ahead, sir.
For your report, Councilor McLeod, I'd like to bring up feedback I've received from residents on Barrymore Court. What's been happening over the last number of months, maybe the last year or so, is there seems to be a change of zoning, which is primarily single-family dwelling on Barrymore Court, a very quiet street, has somehow transformed into multi-unit, multi-unit properties. It's taken its toll in the neighborhood in terms of all these developments have taken place. I did have an opportunity to speak to Mr. Forbes a few weeks ago. I continue to get phone calls and emails. Lifetime residents are very upset with this change of usage on Barrymore Court with no authorization. No approval by City Council. It's also had an impact on vehicle traffic, parked cars both sides of the street. Now we're entering vehicles, parking vehicles in front of Children's Park, Kmart Park. I was there today again to observe these latest developments. Would you please take this back to your committee and put it on the agenda, see what we can do, maybe we can do some type of analysis. I think we need to open up the lines of communications with property owners that for some reason are changing the usage without authorization of City Council. And we'd like to, the residents would like to revert back to what it's been for the last 40 to 50 years. It's primarily single-family. There is a couple of apartment buildings, but primarily it's single-family dwelling. They look to maintain that the integrity of the zoning. Like I said, it's way out of control, and the residents are pretty frustrated, and they want the neighborhood back.
Okay. Even. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Forbes.
If you feel for the concern of the residents, I really don't have much to say, but certainly we'll take it back and review. Anytime residents are upset, we should. Unless Alex, you want to comment at all on that, or just wait till we have a meeting?
Yeah, we should like to get more information.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, sir. Let's just stand up and just...
You said it was unauthorized?
That's right.
So what, some of these building things without a building permit?
What they're doing, so changing single-family houses, say duplexes, into multi-use units. Like, let's say it's a duplex, next thing you know, it's a fourplex.
Without an authorization from the city?
That's right. That's what the residents are saying. These are lifelong residents, living that street for some of 40, 50 years. And I met with them, and I'm not happy with what's taking place. There seems to be, seems to be no checks or balances as to what's taking place on the street. Again, there's no, no authorization from City Council.
So, Councilor Bernard, are you clear on that? Like, I'm getting that four, six, eight people are living in the unit. Is that what we had?
I think so.
That's what it is.
Well, I think what I'm getting at is saying a two-unit has compared to a four-unit.
Is that what it's going into?
There's a number of different examples. There's a variety of things that are happening on the street. So maybe as a case study, planning could win, do some type of investigation, and all the properties are there, see what the zoning for, what's permitted uses, and then anyone that's violating the, you know, current zoning development bylaw and what it's, what it's zoned for. And I think we need to top these property owners. It's not just an opportunity to win and buy properties and just look to, to make some type of an investment where there's, there's an opportunity to make money at the expense of people that are living in that community that are playing by their rules.
Councilor McLeod, what we can do is get the addresses that it's talking about and forward them to Trevor Eisner, correct?
Yeah, and we should have more than, I mean, to investigate a complaint, you need to have a complaint.
Right.
People can say what they want, but they need to be very clear as to what they think is being violated.
Yeah.
I mean, we will look into it.
But you would prefer to have a written complaint?
A written complaint is better, and then, then we have a line of communication with the person, if we have some follow-up of that person, we can ask them additional questions. But, but, you know, again, at this stage, I'm not aware of any non-conformance, but until we review it all, I won't know until that time.
Do you want to fill out that, Councilor Twill, or do you want to get someone in the neighborhood?
Your Worship, it's best, I think in my opinion, you should direct that to the citizen, because...
Thank you, sir.
Then it will avoid going back to a counselor and asking them a question. You're going to have to go back to the citizen.
Thank you. Last point.
My motivation here today is to get it out in the air.
Yeah.
Because this is what's happening. I've known some of these people my whole life, and they wouldn't be bringing my attention. They do have the form that you sent me, Mr. Forbes. Thank you very much for that.
Okay.
You know, it's just a continuation, because with all these multipurpose units, there's more vehicles on the street, there's concern about, about protective service vehicles being able to navigate up and down the street when they're parking both sides of the street, and out parking in front of Children's Park.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, prohibited.
Okay. You got that, Alex? Good?
Uh, I'm...
He's got the form. He just has to get someone to fill out the form.
Yeah, and if we get some more information, we'll follow it up, and we'll get back to...
My other concern with the usual unauthorized, our City Council, is it unauthorized?
We did not...
Zoning there, so it's not being zoned. They certainly have an habit to fix that.
That's right.
See, that's all, that's all I want to get clarified, is saying that they're adding more units, and the zone is allowed to, and so it's unauthorized, or are you saying...
That's exactly what I'm saying.
They're building...
That's exactly what I'm saying.
They're building...
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay. So, again, the form has been passed on to a counselor from the area. He just has to get someone to fill out the form.
Right. Yep.
And we'll look at it. Okay. Any other questions?
Residents.
Do you want to go on to the first resolution? You want to wait there, Councilor Bernard?
Yeah, I...
Do you have a question?
Well, I just think that if someone's building that unauthorized adding units, I don't think somebody has to log into their plan. The zone is there, and says it's allowed to, not allowed. I don't think somebody needs to log into their plan. If it's a two-unit duplex, and they're adding two more units to it, they're not allowed, then we should be able to deal with it.
Yeah.
But if it's...
I agree.
A lot of people wanting units, and that may be something that's...
You know what? Can we surpass, can we just send the inspector out tomorrow and see if there's two, four, six?
But I guess, I guess, Your Worship, you know, we investigate these on a daily basis, and the fact is, is that we have half the information. So what we think the applicant is complaining about isn't what they're complaining about.
But it'd be obvious if people went there and built in two more units.
It's never as obvious as people think. The reality is, is that we investigate these a lot of the time. Sometimes people have inaccurate information. They don't realize that the permits that were issued are, that the permits are okay. But we, we need to find out, what are we going out to look at? Is it the number of people in the building?
Yeah.
Is it the number of cars? Is there...
So we still want the complaint form filled out?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Let's keep going. Okay. Do you want to read the first one?
Planning and Heritage Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Resolved that pursuant to the requirements of Section 20 of the Planning Act, R S P E I 1988, Chapter P-8, and the requirements of Section 2.1 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, P H-ZD.2, Council hereby appoints Jennifer McLaren as Desident Development Officer to administer provisions of the Zoning and Development Bylaw and any other bylaws under the Planning and Heritage Department regarding licensing, inspections, applications, and that this designation of authority shall cease if the job duties of this employee no longer requires the designation, if the employee terminates employment with the City of Charlottetown or upon further written notice.
Questions called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Councilor McCabe, yea or nay?
In favor of us.
Thank you. Next one, sir?
Planning Resolution Number One, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the request for a major variance to permit a home occupancy, dog grooming business, use within a portion of the single detached dwelling at 9 Popular Avenue, P I D number 391672 be approved, subject to the minimum of three parking stalls being provided.
Questions called?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Councilor McCabe, yea or nay?
In favor.
Planning Resolution Number Two, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the request to reduce the minimum required rear yard setback from 24.6 feet to approximately 15 feet, and consolidate three lots. Lot 1, P I D number 1046275. Lot 2, P I D number 1046283. And Lot 3, P I D number 1128362, in order to commit a 35,000 square foot expansion to the existing 100D, like manufacturing facility, located at 20 Innovation Way, P I D number 1046283 be approved, subject to the following condition: registration of a pinned final survey plan and a new perimeter D description describing the outer boundaries of the three consolidated parcels with the Provincial Register of Deeds.
Great news. Questions called. Great news. Okay. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Councilor McCabe, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay.
In favor.
Thank you. Sir?
Planning Resolution Number Three, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the Zoning and Development Bylaw for a portion of the property at 88 Brackley Point Road, P I D number 396770, from single detached residential large R-1L zone to medium density residential townhouse R-3T zone, and narrow single detached residential R-1N zone, and amend Appendix A future land use map of the official plan for a portion of the property at 88 Brackley Point Road, P I D number 396770, from low density residential to medium residential residential, in order to facilitate the construction of three townhouse dwellings and two single detached dwelling R-1N narrow lots be approved, subject to the signing of a development agreement.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you can, Councilor McCabe.
I'm just making sure that the development agreement includes the trees that are going to stay for the property while it's occupancy. Is that going to be in the development agreement?
Council McLeod, do you want to yield to the manager?
I'll yield to the manager.
Yield to the manager.
Your Worship, that is correct. Some of those trees are on the applicant's property, but some of the trees are also on an adjacent property. When Planner Laurel Palmer Thompson spoke to the applicant today, he just wanted us to be aware of that he will certainly protect the trees that are on his portion of the property.
Keep the trees.
But it's, it's, there are trees that may be perceived as being his, but we will certainly clarify that, and it'll be in the agreement.
Is that all right, Councilor McCabe? Did you hear it?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was what we had to go earlier. Yeah, thank you.
Do you want to call the question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Councilor McCabe, yea or nay?
In favor.
Thank you. Mr. McKeown?
Planning Resolution Number Four, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the request to amend Appendix A future land use map of the official plan for a portion of the subject property at the corner of Royalty Road and Lower Mallpeck Road, P I D number 818856, from low density residential to institutional, and amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for a portion of the subject property at the corner of Royalty Road and Lower Mallpeck Road, P I D number 818856, from single detached residential R-1L zone to institutional I-zone, and low density residential R-2 zone, be approved, subject to signing of a development agreement outlining the proposed uses associated with the church and removal of the access onto Lower Mallpeck Road.
Councilor Mc...
So, thank you very much, Your Worship. So during the night of the public meeting, there were concerns raised, and so, but if I may, I might just try and clarify some. There are other uses permitted in the institutional zone that could be constructed on the site. So they, they have since said that, no, no, this is going to be a church, and that's all, and they're willing to put that into writing. And access to Lower Mallpeck Road, so I think anybody who's taken a drive out there, you can understand that there should not be an access on the Lower Mallpeck Road, and the residents would be quite concerned. So that's another one. The church combined with seven additional buildings could have a considerable amount of traffic, with the traffic study was done, and as long as it not come around to that busy Lower Mallpeck Road, and that was said, that's right. The lots should stay empty, or as a single detached residential zone. Again, you know, they do have the, they do have the right to change, and they're trying to meet the needs of the community. There's also a swamp behind the development, that was quite a concern for one gentleman there. But as it turns out, that's what's happening there now, and why what looks to be a road is the right way for the proper water region to go through there, so that that flooding problem doesn't happen anymore. And the Greater Lloyd Church, after hearing our public, our planning meeting, did write a letter, and if you saw mine, I could read it. And so it says, "Thank you for taking the time to thoroughly review our rezoning proposal. I wanted to write your concerning a couple of items that were discussed during the public meeting. There seemed to be some concern from the neighbors near the property that if the rezoning was to go forward, the property may be used for other multiple uses identified under institutional. As I stated in the public meeting, our plan for this property is to construct a facility that will primarily serve as a meeting place for our congregation, as well as a daycare center. We would like our facility to function as a space that can serve the community in various ways, which may include hosting meetings for the congregation and the community. There were also some concerns regarding the access to Lower Mallpeck Road. As I mentioned in the meeting, the access is not critical for our future plans, and the council agrees that this driveway is issued, and I would ask that if possible to rezoning proceed on the condition that this access would be eliminated. Once again, I thank you both, the council staff." So I think, you know, some of the things I've kind of raised, questions have been answered, and I think we're comfortable with it going forward. Any other questions? I'll tell you answers.
Deputy? Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Council McLeod, for that update. That's the first I heard of that letter. I didn't see the package here. But at that meeting, we did hear from residents that back a while ago, this land was zoned institutional, and they asked to put it to R1. So council of the day did, I think it was 2002, 2003?
2005.
2005. So now they're back trying to reverse it. And I guess the residents of the area that purchased properties surrounding this particular parcel bought it, understanding that it's R1, and that's what they'd like to keep it as. It's great that they don't want to have access on the Lower Mallpeck Road, because we know that's a blind turn, and it is a busy road. But the intent of keeping R1, they want to keep it, R1 for the community. They don't want to rezone to institutional. So they would just like for the land to stay as it is and develop it as single-family houses. Thanks.
You want to reply?
Just thank you very much, Council Cody. Again, you're right, this was the, at one time, the church had plans at that time, and they kind of said, no, they weren't going to do it. And of course, small congregation, as they grow, things change as they grow, and I think that's what happened in this case, is they realized they do need a bigger space, so they thought, gee, we want to go back to Plan A and rezone back to build a church. I do understand the residents and their concern, but most of the area is going to be quite compatible to the R1. And I think the church probably at the end of the day, isn't such a bad thing. It could be a lot worse things, you know, and thank God we've got an applicant that, that wants to be a church. Like, if you look down the road, it could maybe someday switch hands to where it's back here, or it'll be institutional or something else. So again, it's, it's a, you know, I think it's a better story than a bad story in this case. Thank you.
Council Yankoff?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just, to reiterate what Council Cody had to say, I certainly heard from the residents that evening that their, you know, their idea is they purchased property in the area, it was going to stay residential. That's what they want, and that's why I'll be supporting tonight in the main residential. Thank you.
Councilor Rivera?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Council McLeod, for the report and the letter. And I guess, I've heard from a few residents as well that were concerned. My, I guess my question is this: rezoning it to institutional, there's no, there's no guarantee, even with the development agreement, that, that that zoning only allows for a church. Because once you, once you rezone that property, it's, it's married to that property until another rezoning. So anything that falls under the institutional zone is fair game, even with the development agreement.
Your Worship, you can, you can restrict it through the development agreement. The development agreement is binding on the property, so they have to adhere to that agreement.
So what happens if the development agreement is changed at some point? That, that, is that land rezoned back to R1, essentially the institutional?
It stays with the institutional. Like, if they sold the property, and somebody wanted to change that, they're going to have to come back and get it rezoned. I mean, the purpose of the development agreement is to tie the applicant to what they told the public, and councils so desired. So their agreement would be the use is restricted to the church, the daycare, and sort of ancillary uses to a church. That's, that's our intent, but it's up to you folks as how you want it set up.
Question? Question called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Put up your hand. I don't know. I don't know. I got... In favor, I got McLeod, Councilor Duran, Councilor Duffy, Councilor Ramsey. Councilor McCabe, yea or nay?
Not in favor.
Okay, so not in favor, please put up your hand. Council Twill, Council Yankoff, Council Rivera, Councilor, or Deputy Mayor Cody. Oh, I missed it. Oh, Council McCabe.
I think Council Bernard is good.
Council McCabe, yea or nay?
Aye, but no.
Council Bernard, yea or nay?
Nay.
Six to zero. So...
Six to four.
Six to four, but it's lost, so it's just a few...
That's it, right?
There's no other, you'll be drawing another, we have to drop another resolution. Council Tucker?
Yea.
Yea?
Yea.
And Ramsey? Says to reject it. Want to read that again, Rich?
So will this be Resolution 5?
No.
It's just, it's a supplementary to four.
Four, B?
No, supplementary, four supplementary. Okay.
Planning Resolution 4 supplementary, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Elena Yankoff. Be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix A future land use map of the official plan for a portion of the subject property on the corner of Royalty Road and Lower Mallpeck Road, P I D number 818856, from low density residential to institutional, and amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for a portion of the subject property on the corner of Royalty Road and Lower Mallpeck Road, P I D number 818856, from single detached residential R-1L zone to institutional I-zone, and low density residential R-2 zone be rejected.
Council Rivera, do you have a comment or a question?
I do, Your Worship. Thank you. Just before I sat down, I just had, I just had another point I needed to make or wanted to make. So in the past, I know we've talked about, you know, putting residential uses in commercial areas, for instance, you know, Be Surewood Road, and I know planning staff at the time were against that, just saying that there shouldn't, you know, that we're running out of space for, for commercial. And anyways, this is kind of a reverse situation where, you know, we need housing, different types of housing in the city of Charlottetown. You know, removing, removing the R1, entering it to institutional, in an area that, you know, housing is needed. You know, that's, that's an important point to think that should be made as well. That's not so much against the church or, or against daycare, it's more the fact that the location is, you know, so far R1, housing is needed, all types of housing, and that's the reason why I'm, that's why I opposed it.
Okay. Question? Questions called. So question, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That's to reject it. Okay. Council Twill, Council Yankoff, Council Rivera, Council Bernard, Council Deputy Mayor Cody. Council McCabe, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. Those against, please raise your hand. Council McLeod, Council Duran, Council Ramsey, and Council Duffy. Thank you. Next one, sir?
Planning Resolution Number Five, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the request to amend Appendix C approved site-specific exemptions as per Section 3.11, site-specific exemptions of the zoning and development bylaw, and amend Appendix A future land use map of the official plan from low density residential to commercial, in order to allow for a commercial use automobile service center to be operated on residential property out of an accessory building at 247 Royalty Road, P I D number 404632, which is prohibited as a home occupation, and currently not permitted use in a single detached residential R-1L zone be rejected.
Council Rivera?
Thank you, Your Worship. I would like to speak to this one for, for a few minutes.
Okay.
Now, nine to 10 times, I would vote against something like this in a neighborhood, but I think, I think this is unique. I think the situation is unique. I think this property is unique, in the sense that, you know, I represent the area, part of it anyways. I think Council Cody represents the other side of the road. But either way, if you look at where the property is, it's 1.3 acre property, so it's large. If you look what's adjacent, within 100 meters, maybe even, maybe even less than 100 meters, you have, you have a crane service, Tim's Crane Service. I wouldn't support it. In this case, in this case, I am. I read through the package. I saw a lot of, you know, stuff about sheds. The 16 by 16 shed, for instance, I think I read that there was no permit issued. I received a copy today that there was a permit issued for that 16 by 16 shed back in the day. And the two sheds that were reported saying that they have too many, they're not there. So again, I think the property is unique. You know, I'd certainly like to see this approved with, with regulations in place, development agreement to say that operating hours are from eight to five and that, and that they're strict and adhered to. But with those, again, I think we have to look at individual properties. It is against, it does go against the bylaw. But again, you know, we come here having, I think we have a resolution tonight that don't meet the bylaw. That's why we're here.
Document them.
We had 10 last week, last month. And anyways, it just, anything outside the bylaw, we're here to, to vote on. And this one, I think, is unique. It's different enough that I'll be supporting it.
Can I go with Counsel McLeod and then Counsel Yankoff?
Thank you very much, Counsel Roy Verne. I appreciate your comments. I guess as Chair of Planning, my job here would be to remind folks that we just few minutes ago respected the wishes of an R1 community. And that R1 community wanted no church. They wanted it left as R1. So now, all of a sudden, we're going to say, the heck with R1, we're going to let this guy have his garage. So I think we need to show some consistency here. If you really look at this, folks, there's a lot of non-compliance over the years. Yes, Counsel Reverb, you're right, the 16 by 16 shed did get approved the second time. The first time in 2011, he applied and it was denied. Right? And then above that, what was else was there? The smaller accessory buildings you had mentioned, they were moved outside the limits of the city and got approved. Two smaller accessory buildings required to be moved. And that's how that got happened. The applicant then applied for the garage and got it. But what's going on is he's got way too much square footage of buildings. And like he's got almost three times the amount of square footage. He's got 27 hundred square feet now, and he should only have 850. And now we're going to permit a garage, which one of his customers, by the way, is a trucking company, right? They're, John got up and spoke well. And you know what? This is tough. You know, it pulls on your heartstrings. But this is going to open up a can of worms in the R1 industry, in the R1 zones. Like real, how would a garage, what's going to stop? Right? So we have to show, with one minute, we're showing consistency with the last one. And now this time, we're going to break the other one. And I just think that when you see so many things not, not being adhered to over the last, since 2011, and now we're going to grant this, I think you're better be ready for a floodstorm of applications for R1. And that's just my two cents worth.
Counsel Reverb, can you just wait? Counsel Duffy did put up his hand.
Yeah, I was just going to follow up. But yeah.
Do you want to follow up? Go ahead.
I was just going to follow. Thank you, Counsel. So I, listen, I get a bit of consistency, but let's flip three pages back and we just approved the dog grooming. And there's a home occupation. My point is that each property is unique. And, you know, I think, again, that's why, that's why we're here tonight. To simply paint the brush, the city with one, one brush, then we wouldn't be here voting on anything with regards to, to bylaw changes or anything, because everyone would have to adhere to it, and we wouldn't have to change it. We wouldn't have to vote. Right? But again, I think, I think the situation is unique enough. The location, the size, everything. I don't care about the sheds and the buildings. I think we're getting off track by talking about those because, again, the application is for a site-specific amendment. The land remains R1, okay? So when the use is no longer there, it resorts back to an R1 use. So we're not changing the zoning. So that's key too.
No, this will be permanent.
This is site-specific, it says.
Site-specific means that it'll run with, if he sells the property, it's...
Okay, well then put it site-specific, where if it's non-conforming and when he sells...
You're approving that use for all time. There's no, there's no restriction on it. It will run with that property forever.
Can we, can we not? Can we put it something where it resorts back to?
We don't have contractual zoning.
Well, it's, you're getting into, that's a little bit more difficult because that's what the site-specific, this is not allowed by the plan and it's not allowed by the zoning bylaw. The site-specific is amending the plan, which is contrary true, and you're amending the zoning, it's subject to a development agreement. I mean, there's a number of issues there that you should contemplate for terms and conditions on this property. There's environmental issues that we discussed at the planning board, which staff don't, we don't regulate environmental, environmental issues, like the, whatever measures he has up there for oil, grease, chemical materials, all of that is, is something that we wouldn't manage, but, but somebody should be, be sort of on top of. But, but it will run with the property. If he sells the property and somebody wants to in the future continue that operation, as long as they stick within those parameters, they can do that.
Counsel McLeod, just quick, because Counsel Duffy was waiting patiently.
So just to reply to Counsel Reverb, so the reason the dog grooming got approved was because we approved one girl down the street. So that's the can of worms I'm talking about, that you're opening up. Once you allow one, they're going to use that from time to time again. How do you let him do it and not me? So that's my argument here, is that once you allow that R1 garage, R1 is open for a garage. So I just need to make sure we all understand it.
Counsel Duffy and then Counsel Yankoff.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you.
I reviewed all the documentation and I was at the public meeting. It went on for quite a while.
Yep.
Quite entertaining by time.
It did?
And kind of confusing.
There was a few subjects that were quite amusing.
Yeah, yeah, there were, yeah. Filling, let's say.
What, what I, what disturbs me the most is that I don't know what this gentleman would
have to do to get a denial for, for his, for a, yeah, denial for his property. He's, he's, he's non-conformed and out of reality type of thing. He, he made application to the city. Staff recommended to reject the application. The planning board recommended six-zero to reject the application. And here it is today. And I get the funny feeling there's been communications. We all know that the communications between the applicant and the council members, or the friends of the applicant and the council members, is supposed to cease on the eve of the public meeting. Is that right, Mr. Forbes?
Ideally...
If noon the next day, maybe?
Right. I mean, when people, the public participation process, people phoning folks all the time, but it's hard to kind of deal with. But the formal part of the process...
Yeah, right, yeah. So we were dealing with six-nothing or whatever the staff recommendation was, then the six-nothing now here is here. I get the funny feeling that this thing has gone from a six-nothing situation somewhere else. And it's all due to communication that should have been taking place. And in fact, this afternoon, I got a phone call at Cora Defore, but I have caller ID. So I don't answer any phone calls, as Deputy Mayor Cody knows. This afternoon, I don't answer any phone calls, especially on the day of council meeting. Mr. Dr. Deputy Mayor Cody was phoning in a completely different matter.
Did you answer the call?
Tonight, face to face.
Okay.
Anyway...
That's why I don't call you on Mondays.
Having said all that, I thank Counsel Reverb for his, his, his position. I thank Counsel McLeod for his position, because we have it on tape. I, I know for a fact this application, if it is, if it is granted, will end up at I-RAC. I know that. And to that end, I would just like to remind council members, and it's not a popular topic, but under the Code of Conduct, subsection 8.9, the following statement is made. Members of councils have a responsibility to make informed decisions in accordance with the Act, and that would be the MGA, and be prepared in council meetings to bring forth reasoning and rationale of their vote. So I ask you this, this evening, Your Worship, to request if Counsel Reverb is already, if Counsel Plant is already, the remainder of us, because that's, that is the request of I-RAC, as we know, and that's where it's heading. So I think we should treat our friends at I-RAC with due respect. So, and failure to do it or to do it in a mocking sort of way would be viewed as a non-compliance with Code of Conduct. And we all know where that leads. So thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counsel Duffy. Counsel Yankoff. Sorry for keeping you waiting, but back and forth, and now it's your turn. Just speak loud, so Counsel McCabe can hear you.
Yep. So I was actually one of those members of planning board that was the six-zero vote. And I am going to support this business owner to have his small little business in his 1.2 acre property. And that's because I, after rereading things, I, and I took a drive-by a few times, the information I received from staff wasn't quite as accurate as what the package had said. So that's one of my main reasons for changing my vote this evening, was, for example, there weren't multiple buildings. There was only one other building. And yeah, so as Counsel Duffy said, you know, we need a reason. And my main reason is that the information that I received in the package was not quite as accurate as I would have preferred or detailed. And the other part I'm a bit perplexed about is we talked about the, that cooling off period, that end period of noon time the next day. But we just received a letter that Counsel McLeod read this evening in terms of the rezoning to institutional. But as Counselor Deputy Cody pointed out, it wasn't in our package. So that must have came after that noon time as well. So I think that that information does come after that, perhaps.
Do you have, Your Worship... Breaking news?
Yeah, the, the, the breaking news on that. That was at the request of the planning board. They wanted to contact that developer to ask him what was the direction of the planning board. So that's what we did. We called him and said, this is going to go forward with that recommendation that he had this evening. Please indicate for the meeting whether, that you're in agreement, because if he wasn't in agreement, that was information you should have had. But he was, he was being asked for additional information by the city. He wasn't offering information that was unsolicited.
You can go right ahead, Counsel.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. The other part I should point out was this resident had been approved for a building permit to actually bring their, their outbuilding to do renovations, to build it up higher so that they could make their door entrances bigger. So at that time, if they were not complying to what the rules were, I'm confused by the city would have issued a permit. He's still allowed to do that work. So that's...
Well, there's, there's two, Your Worship?
Is all right, Counsel McLeod?
Right.
Yes.
There's, there's a long history on this property. And again, the, the neighbors are saying additional things that are happening on that property. When somebody makes an application, we don't ask to go through these buildings. We're relying on the information we have. But, but that's some of the non-compliance. In regard to the building, sometimes we're using orthophotos in regard to what was there. We had, there was a site inspection. It's a large property. There are some buildings that are, are not readily, you know, available to be seen. But the, the issue really is the use of the property. The, he's got three times at least the size of the building for an accessory building on the property with the, with the primary building. I think the primary building's 22 hundred square feet. And then there were some accessory buildings. There's some speculation that there's other things in the main building. There was a reference about an in-laws. We, we don't know about whether that's correct or not. But we'd have to do an inspection. So all of these things, but the, the primary thing that you're dealing with tonight is the change of use. It's the change of use to allow for a garage. He's already got well beyond the thresholds for accessory buildings by at least three, three times. And then the issue is he's asking to introduce a use that he's never had before. And the repairing, commercially repairing vehicles. That's the primary issue here, for staff at least. It's the use.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is an unusual one.
It is, three to the H.
It is. And I agree with Counsel Reverb. We walk the street, and there's a welding shop right across the street.
Chambers.
So I kind of walk through this back and forth, plus the position with the gentleman saying to save yourself, well, change the church to institutional. The residents were very clear. They didn't want that institutional change. In this particular one, most people stood up in favor of this gentleman being able to do that work, make the five, work it up, small vehicle repair, whatever. So, you know, the thing I look at is, one, if you look at the last street, see what's already there. Two, the residents that live around them, most of them are in favor of it. So for me, it's one of those things, it's a different situation. I agree, nine to 10 times, I, I vote no to it. But looking at the size of property, looking at the properties around them, close to them, listening to the neighbors, the majority of them saying they're all okay with it. You know what? I vote no.
I got to use it.
Yes. So just to clarify, Counsel...
And I have a question here, please.
It's on, it borders under Arnold Lane.
Right.
Which is the border between Miltonvale and Charlottetown, right?
Right.
But across the road was Chambers Motor Repair. Well, that's not in Charlottetown. That's in Miltonvale.
It's in Miltonville. So it's still across the street.
No, no, but it's just to clarify.
And just, just to clarify, Counsel Bernard, so the gentleman right next door, who's going to be impacted the most, was certainly not happy. And he made it clear, it was the night of the public meeting, which is going to make it awful hurt for us when it goes to I-RAC, was, you know, you're breaking four or five of your own bylaws here to approve this. And it doesn't matter if he's a nice guy or whether he's not, come to I-RAC. That's not going to mean anything to banks or different. But if you look at the positives, the neutrals, and the shortcomings, you've got seven shortcomings and you don't have any positives. And I'm sorry, as Chair of Planning, I got to tell you, this is not the way to vote. But anyway, that's my point. Thank you.
Counsel Duffy and then Counsel McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll be short. That's the problem this council runs into time and time again. We're comparing what's going on presently with what happened in the past, or comparing it to what the residents say. We should be finding in the zoning and development bylaws, what should be going on here. It doesn't matter, and you're perfectly right, Miltonvale is part, it has some of these industrial uses somewhere across the street. What's the zone across the street? I don't know. But a simple visit to Mr. Forbes' match will tell me what the zone is. So we're, I really don't put a lot of stock in the opinion of the residents, okay? If they had their way, there would be no development in some cases. So we should be looking at the bylaw. To subjectively say the information wasn't right, or wasn't enough of it, or the right kind of it, that's, that's a pure opinion call. You've got to look at the, you've got to find your, your reason for acting in the zoning and development bylaws. This happens time and time again. That's why we're always in reverse. We're either amending, going back to revisit, rescinding, reclaiming, whatever it is, before we go forward again. Because we find ourselves in a pickle that we put ourselves into, because we didn't use the zoning and development bylaws to defend ourselves.
Thank you, Your Worship. Okay. Was there anything else? Counsel, Counsel McCabe.
Yep. Thank you. And thank you, Counsel Duffy, for reminding me of my Code of Conduct responsibility. Again, I think this is out of interpretation. I think every application we're hearing is changing regulation and use for different things. I know there's a, a home for sale right now on Vital Path that has a beautiful garage with a big car left in it. And I'm not sure if that's conforming use or if that's been approved. But I did drive by this property also, and I'm glad I did, because like Counsel Yankoff said, what was in our package around what was on the property and what the issues were, I didn't see that. I don't feel like it's a very private neighbor yard with trees. I don't know, and there's a road before the neighbor. So, you know, me, I'm with right Counsel Reverb when he says that it is a unique property. I will be supporting his application. So I will be changing from my stance. I just want to make that clear for my...
Counsel Duran and then Deputy.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just, for clarification, you know, we referenced a dog grooming business. Isn't that a recognized home occupation? So you're, you're comparing that to this as a commercial, you know, rezoning, right? So the dog grooming business really has nothing to do with the commercial aspect.
Your Worship, the only reason the dog grooming business was not permitted as a right is because it's on appointments. And in the zoning bylaw, it says for home occupations, where you're having appointments on an hourly basis, you need to be able to dictate how many parking spaces should be on the property. Because some, you know, and because some, some uses, therapist or whatever, people are coming, people are going. And it says council needs to dictate the amount of parking. That's the only thing, what was the anomaly with the dog grooming business. Dog grooming business had historically been dealt with as home occupations.
Okay. So that's, that's what I was thinking, that that had to do with it. But this is going, and I know what it's like. Like you apply for, to build a garage in your own property and, and the department says, no, you can only put 750 square feet as a garage.
Right.
So now I go up here and it's triple that. So that's where it's, you know, I feel for the guy. I mean, he's, he's certainly in the predicament. And what do we do as counselors to, you know, to help him out? But, but I mean, there's so many crazy things that are going on with this application. So it's, it's hard in my aspect to support. And so I just wanted to declare, clear. Thank you.
No, I had Counsel McLeod, okay?
Just, you know, to clarify on the...
So that's where it's, you know, I feel for the guy. I mean, he's certainly in the predicament, and what do we do as counselors to, you know, to help him out? But, but I mean, there's so many crazy things that are going on with this application. So it's hard in my aspect to support it. So I just wanted to declare, clear. Thank you.
No, I had, Counselor McLeod, okay?
Just, you know, to clarify on the, I mean, when you drive by, it's hard to really recognize the amount of space that he has, but I mean, during the public meeting, I mean, there was an aerial shot of showing all the buildings that he does have, and that the building, the main building he's going to do his garage is twice the size it should be. And if you notice, like in June, he was denied, you know, his trying, I don't know how many times we've got to say no, but I mean, I just, I feel for him as well, but we're going down a road that's going to be out of the council field. As you just mentioned, he's got ER1 residential Barry Mark Court, concerned people build a complex units. Well, what's going to happen if there's a garage next to Barry Mark Court? Because ER1 means ER1, and it doesn't matter where it is. So just be careful how you vote.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll be quick, there's a lot of good points made here. And I did take a drive by myself, and the property is very well maintained. It's not, it's not an eyesore by any stretch. It is unique, like Counselor Verde said, with the property area and the boundaries and the surrounding areas. And I think part of the issue too, that I think we should be considering is the counselor of the area, he knows his or her area the best, and we should put some weight on those comments also. So I'll be supporting the council from the area.
Counselor Yankoff.
I just wanted to, just reminding, when we're talking about this building and how it's too big for the property and it's not permitted that size, but the planning and heritage department issued a permit not more than a couple of months ago for him to do extensive renovations to it. So how do you allow someone to renovate something that you're telling them that is not permitted use? So, I mean, you know, you're right, there's a lot of confusion around this property, but I don't see all of the esc property owners.
Counselor McLeod, yield to the manager.
Can you manage to work? This is a nonconforming property. That's the problem. The, I think at the public meeting, the gentleman's brother was the one who said he built the building. That was well before the city regular, like before it came in the city. That's why you have a large building. So now he has some nonconforming status, which is hard to claw back, but he had some previous approvals for some other buildings for some other addition along the way. So, you know, I know it is confusing, you're entitled to some things because of the nonconformance that was there prior, but the real issue, I could just say the focus on, the, those buildings are there and staff can deal with the buildings in regard to what should be there and what shouldn't be there. But the primary ask tonight is, it's the use. That's the focus of this application. He can accommodate it on the site because it's there and it's nonconforming. His brother, and again, I hate repeating these things because I may have missed it, but there was some discussion at the public meeting that his brother had mentioned that he had built the large garage, which this use is going to go into years and years and years ago. So then it's a nonconforming building prior to our bylaw, and we have to recognize that use. But it's the introduction of this commercialization of that structure that's the primary aspect of this application that you should be, I think that should be your focus, because they can, it can happen internally in the building without any expansion, because the building is there. But that's what I would focus my attention if I was a counselor, it's the change of use. It's the, that's the primary aspect of this application. The rest of it is just background.
Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. That is to reject it, to reject it. Okay, just one second. Counselors McLeod, Duran, Ramsey, and Duffy. McCabe, Counselor McCabe, are you in favor of the rejection?
No.
Okay. All those in favor to, or against the rejection, please raise your hand. Against the rejection. Counselors Twill, Counselor Yankoff, Counselor Reverde, Counselor Bernard, Deputy Mayor Cody, Counselor McCabe.
No.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Could you get the rationale from those who voted in favor of the, that did not speak?
I already spoke to why I was voting in favor.
And what was that? What was that, Counselor McCabe? Counselor McCabe?
My counsel, I told you that I concur with what Counselor Reverde said, what Counselor Yankoff said, that the information we received in the planning package when I drove by wasn't accurate, and I don't feel that it is, I think it's unique property, and I think that he's on the borderline where there's lots of other work sites happening, and I don't see it going to be an impact.
So nothing based in the zoning and development bylaws?
Those are my reasons, Counselor Duffy. Thank you very much.
Counselor Twill is the only other one. Counselor Twill, do you want to give your rationale?
No.
Well, I think he has to, he's already alluded to Iraq's rulings.
Yeah, I know, Code of Conduct.
Which is, again, the section.
Do you want me to read it again?
Yes, please.
It's section 8.9 of the Council Code of Conduct. Members of council have a responsibility to make informed decisions in accordance with the act and to be prepared in council meetings to bring forth the reasoning and rationale of their vote.
Counselor Twill, you understand that?
Counselor Duffy, can I, we had legal advisor, you know, one or two people speaking at the reasons about is what he was looking for in most situations. I think people have a right, whether or not they want to speak to or for at this time.
That's not correct. As long as you're a member of council.
Again, open to interpretation.
You have to be ready to disclose your rationale. So why don't we just ask for a legal appeal? We have our solicitor. Counselor, can you hear the same legal?
I think it says that you have to read, doesn't say you have to get it. Deputy, ready.
Could you, do you want to delve into this or do you want to? No. So, good call.
Thank you. I'm happy to give you an opinion if that's what you wish.
If you give us an opinion, please, could you? Later. Okay, so we'll leave the vote as is and we'll wait for your opinion. Is that all right?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Is that all right with you?
Perfect.
Did you want to add a closing remark?
Sorry, just, so your next resolution is going to be to approve this with a development agreement. Now, staff have got 12 terms and conditions, but, you know, the terms and conditions are signed by you. You can, you can reject some of them or, but I just thought I would indicate that there's a lot of things that could be applied to that development agreement. If you want me to read them into the record before you vote, I can read that. If you would prefer just that staff deal with it, we can deal with that as well.
No, it has to be read into the record.
Okay. So before you take your vote.
So can you read the resolution?
Planning Resolution Number Five Supplemental, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Alan Yankoff. Be resolved that the request to amend Appendix C approved site-specific exemptions as per section 3.11, site-specific exemptions of the zoning and development bylaw, and amend Appendix A future land use map of the official plan from low-density residential to commercial in order to allow for a commercial use automobile service center to be operated on a residential property out of an accessory building at 247 Royalty Road, PID number 404632, which is prohibited as a home occupation and currently not a permitted use in the single detached residential IR-1L zone be approved, subject to the signing of a development agreement.
Okay. So if we approve this, then Mr. Forbes can read into the record the development agreement, correct?
Well, I can read you the, I can read you those terms if you think some of them are too stringent.
That's what I liked to.
You can say drop that term and I will.
Good. Is that all right? Okay. Questions called? All those in favor of, you want to read them?
Yeah, right.
What happens if you defeat it?
Rather have all the information.
Right. Good answer. Okay, go ahead, there was words.
Okay, so the applicant entered into a development agreement, which is a part of your resolution. The site-specific exemption only applies to the existing garage and the automobile-related use. All other instances of nonconformity are not exempt and will be investigated by city staff. The property owner must submit an interior renovation application prior to operation to ensure that the existing garage and subsequent fit-up meets the National Building Code requirements. All instances of nonconformity except the existing garage shall be resolved prior to the operation of the automobile shop. This includes but is not limited to the number of gross floor area of the accessory buildings on such a property. The gross floor area of the existing garage is to be included in the cumulative calculation. There should be no external storage of materials of any kind. The applicant shall have no more than two client vehicles on the property at any given time. The business will operate with a maximum of one full-time employee and two part-time employees other than the proprietor. The business is not permitted to repair trucks or other types of motor vehicles exceeding one and one-half ton capacity. The business shall not operate outside of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM Monday to Friday. The applicant has received approval to raise the existing garage. It must be inspected by the city building inspector prior to operation of the automobile shop, must meet the specifications of the application, be the satisfaction of the building inspector, development officer. The property shall not contain a secondary suite or garden suite. The automobile-related use shall be subject to all sections 50, sections 5.9.1 of the zoning bylaw and notwithstanding subsections 5.1, 5.9.1B and 5.9.1K. Thank you, Your Worship. If there's any terms and conditions that you'd like stricken from that, we can do that.
Clear?
Clear.
Good. Questions called? You have a question then?
I do, Your Worship.
Yes, about the agreement?
I do. So the one, the one in there, you said one employee, one, three employees basically is the total?
Right.
If this is being operated out of their home, I would think that they were probably doing a solo. And again, I'm, the terms and conditions have come from the planner working on it. I don't know if that's through a discussion, but that's up to you folks. You can assign, you know, I'm just here to reflect what you would like to do. Yeah, right. Doesn't matter.
Good. Questions called? Now, all those in favor to rezone this property at 247 from ER1 to commercial, please put up your hand. In favor, Counselor Twill, Counselor Yankoff, Counselor Reverde, Counselor Bernard, Deputy Mayor Cody, and Counselor McCabe, yea, your name?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay. Those against, please raise your hand. Counselor McLeod, Counselor Duran, Counselor Ramsey, and Counselor Duffy. Just one second, just one second.
Julie McCabe. Resolved that the request to amend Appendix C approved site-specific exemption table to allow for a site-specific amendment to the institutional I-zone in order to permit the construction of a 30-unit apartment development on Beach Grove Road, PID number 1131820 be approved.
Questions called?
Questions called, all in favor? Those opposed, carried 9-0.
Who's holding?
Oh, sorry, Counselor McCabe.
I'm in favor.
Here, thank you.
Planning Resolution Number Seven, moved.
Oh, yes, Counselor Verde declared conflict. Thank you.
Planning Resolution Number Seven, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that threshold test prescribed by section 3.15.3 be found not to have been satisfied, and thus recommend that council not proceed to a full reconsideration on the merits of their June 14, 2021 decision pertaining to the approval of site-specific exemptions and amendments to section 30.2, regulations for permitted uses in section 30.3, bonus height development standards in the downtown mixed-use neighborhood DMUN zone of the zoning and development bylaw for a six-story, 84-unit apartment building with parking located within and under the building at 199 Grafton Street, PID number 342790.
Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm wondering what, why the mayor is in conflict there. Or is he in conflict with this one, or is he just going to go back and?
He had to take a phone call.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Okay, all those in favor? Those opposed? Counselor McCabe?
I'm in favor.
Carry 8-0. Thank you.
Official plan amendment, official plan PH-0PA.1. To adopt the official plan amendment PH-0PA.1-025, the land use for a portion of the property at 88 Brackley Point Road, PID number 396770, as shown on Appendix A, future land use map of the City of Charlottetown official plan, is designated as medium-density residential, hereby excluding it from its former designation of low-density resolution. Be it resolved that the official plan amendment PH-OPA.1-025, as it pertains to a portion of the property at 88 Brackley Point Road, PID number 396770, as attached, be adopted, dated September 13, 2021, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, consecrated by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall I carry?
Yes.
Those opposed? Counselor McCabe, in favor?
Zoning and Development Bylaw PH-ZD.2, to adopt bylaw PH-ZD.2-049, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of zoning and development bylaw for a portion of the property at 88 Brackley Point Road, PID number 396770, from single detached residential, large IR-1L zone to medium-density residential townhouse, IR-3T zone, and narrow single detached residential IR-1N zone. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw PH-ZD.2-049, as it pertains to a portion of the property at 88 Brackley Point Road, PID number 396770, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, dated September 13, 2021, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall I carry? Those opposed? Okay. Carried 9-0.
Official plan amendment, zoning and development bylaw PH-ZD.2, to adopt bylaw PH-ZD.2-050, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix C approved site-specific exemptions table to allow for a site-specific amendment to the institutional I-zone in order to permit the construction of a 30-unit apartment development at Beach Grove Road, PID number 1131820. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw PH-ZD.2-500, sorry, dash 050, as it pertains to Beach Grove Road, PID number 1131820, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, dated September 13, 2021, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall I carry?
Yes.
Those opposed?
Yes.
Carry 9-0. Thank you. Which reading are we doing now? I'll have to remove myself for a second reading of McWilliams Road.
It's McWilliams Road.
I wasn't voted as I has had a felony ruling with. Yeah.
Zoning and Development Bylaw PH- Zoning and Development Bylaw PH dash ZD point two, to adopt Bylaw PH dash ZD point two dash zero four eight, a bylaw to amend the Zoning and Development Bylaw, to Appendix G zoning map of the Zoning and Development Bylaw from low-density residential single R dash two S to narrow single-detached residential R dash one N for a portion of subject property at McWilliams Road, PID number 684514, medium-density mixed-use residential MRU to narrow single-detached residential R dash one N for a portion of the subject property at McWilliams Road, PID number 684514, medium-density mixed-use residential MUR to low-density residential single R dash two S for a portion of the subject property at McWilliams Road, PID number 684514, medium-density mixed-use residential MUR to medium-density residential townhouse R dash three T for a portion of the subject property at McWilliams Road, PID number 684514, and medium-density residential townhouse R dash three T to narrow single-detached residential R dash one N for a portion of the subject property at McWilliams Road, PID number 684514. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw PH dash ZD point two dash zero four eight, as it pertains to portions of the property at McWilliams Road, PID number 684514, as attached, was read and approved a first time on August 9, 2021. Be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved, dated September 13, 2021, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe.
Well done there, Richard. Shall it pass?
Pass.
How true?
Pass.
Against? So, Council Doron is against, and Council Verde is everyone. And Council McCain. Go again.
Be it resolved that said bylaw be adopted, dated September 13, 2021, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe.
Shall it pass? Those against? Council Doron. Greg, your favorite, please, Greg.
Official plan PH dash O P A point one. To adapt the official plan amendment PH dash O P A point one dash zero two seven, the land use for property at 247 Royalty Road, PID number 404632, as shown on Appendix A, future land use map of the City of Charlottetown, official plan is designated as commercial, hereby excluding it from its former designation of low-density residential. Be it resolved that the official plan amendment PH dash O P A point one dash zero two seven, as it pertains to the property at 247 Royalty Road, PID number 404632, as attached, be adopted, dated September 13, 2021, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Against?
Zoning and Development Bylaw PH dash ZD point two, to adopt Bylaw PH dash ZD point two dash zero five two, a bylaw to amend the Zoning and Development Bylaw, to amend Appendix C, approved site-specific exemptions, as per Section 3.11, site-specific exemptions of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, to allow for a Murphy use automobile service center to be operated on a residential property out of an accessory building at 247 Royalty Road, PID number 404632, which is prohibited as a home occupation and currently not a periminated use in a single-detached residential R dash one L zone. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw PH dash ZD point two dash zero five two, as it pertains to the property at 247 Royalty Road, PID number 404632, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, dated September 13, 2021, moved by Councilor Terry McLeod, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Any against? Council Doron, nay?
No.
So, Council Doron, nay. So, do I put the two votes down there? There are two votes. Okay. There are two votes out, right? So, it was ten zero, and then the second was nine one. And Council Doron opposed. Is that a total?
Does conclude my report, Your Worship. Thank you very much.
I want to thank you very much. Mr. Forbes, thank you as always.
Thank you.
Okay. And the next report? Public Works, and I think that's, again, Council McLeod?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Public Works Urban Brutification Committee met on August 11, with the draft minutes included in the package. The Public Works Urban Brutification Committee met on August 25, with the draft minutes included. And the Civic Board of Persons with Disabilities met on August 10. Those minutes are in the package as well. We have three resolutions for consideration. I'll try and answer any questions. Council may have. Thank you.
Any questions? Council Twill and Council Dumpy and Council Ramsey, in that order. Council Twill.
Thank you for your report. I received some emails from Resident Party Street. I'm very pleased that Park is not going ahead. As a result of the last meeting, Public Works manager was supposed to send out a letter to the residents. Sent out a letter to the residents on Early Street. It was yet to happen. I'm receiving another email here tonight. It's not going to be meeting with the residents tomorrow. I'm going to ask that you really look to see if we can still do this project again, if we can put it back in the committee's agenda. I tell you that it's been seven years now, and residents have not happened. I'm very upset. The Public Works made a commitment that this project would be completed in July, in July. That was a commitment that was made in July by senior administration of Public Works. So, that's point number one. Point number two, I received a phone call from the owner of the businesses in St. Ebert Shopping Mall. I'm not very pleased that there's no left-hand turn onto St. Peters Road. I don't know if Public Works had a meeting with the sixteen business owners to inform of that particular development. There's no left-hand turn. No left-hand turn is driving up St. Peters Road. Can't make a left-hand turn onto, into the shops at St. Ebert's. So, I don't know what communication strategy was in place to inform, to have discussions with the business owners. If they're ready, please tell me. And I've asked some residents, once again, on Towers Road, about the traffic and the safety of pedestrian traffic on that particular street. A lot of seniors that live in that particular neighborhood, a lot of seniors, they don't feel safe. Traffic has taken liberty over the pedestrian traffic, and, you know, somewhere, somehow, we got to get that venue constructed and to make that safe, to ensure segregation between the pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic. A lot of traffic on that street, as you know, there's a lot of traffic.
And you had a fourth point?
Fourth?
You had a fourth point? Fourth question, because he's-
Uh, fourth point is-
Is it them?
Yeah. Fourth point is, I received, once again, requests for a crosswalk on Houston Street and Oliver in Houston. Public Works managers said no, again. The community is very concerned with the amount of traffic on that street. They want to be able to cross in a safe manner, where there's signs and there's a crosswalk. Once again, we're not getting that kind of cooperation. The residents do not understand why we can't have a crosswalk there, just like we can't have a crosswalk in Mount Everidge Road at Pine Drive, where the residents can walk up to, cross the street in a safe manner, where there's signs and you can't cross over, so children can commute to Sherwood Elementary School. So, those are the issues.
That street again, is that Oliver Street in Houston, did you say?
Yeah. That's what I said. Oliver, Houston.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
At those points, I guess I do of all four, I'll work in reverse. So, your crosswalk on Oliver to Houston, something similar to the Council Ramsey's concern on the cannabis store there on Bell Pier, and why he could have a crosswalk across there for the same reason, it's too close to the intersection, and that crosswalks are intended to go to a corner, not to a middle of a street. But that's the reasoning that Transportation Canada gives, and that's the reason Scott Adams said no. I'm more going, I always want to add any more to that, I can, but I think I will bring it back, just to get a little more clarity, if you'd like. But that was the answer given at the time, and that's where it is. But for your request, I'll mention it again at our next meeting, to see if anything can be done with that, or other ideas it might be.
And get a response and write it.
Yeah. And the second one, the Towers Road, is on progress. I think we promised it was going to be something done this year, so I'm hoping to see work start there fairly soon. I think maybe you could slow down because of what was happening in the corner there across the street, but I believe that we are going to do something there to band-aid it till we get the management.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's still on the go. The Kensington Road, there was a bit of a hiccup with communication. You were right. Paul, St. Ebert's Mall.
St. Peters Road.
So, Mr. Livingston did call me. Probably acted, he called you.
Well, we called before.
Again, we-
He calls.
But I cleared that up with him, that just because he calls doesn't mean he's going to answer the phone. I have a lot on the go, and I explained that to him, and he understood that. So, moving forward, we had a pretty good discussion, and I think I would probably be made a mess up if I was in your shoes. We blocked his entrance without telling him, so it's horse-ly, it's one of the things. So, the next day, we, I get on the phone, of course, and we have now shortened it up. You now can turn left off St. Peters Road into St. Ebert's Mall, and you can now turn left coming ahead of his mall onto St. Peters Road, heading out of town. So, the only problem is, by doing that, we're kind of back to the same problem. People are cutting through, usually does cut through, and that's what we were trying to do, because it creates a safety issue. But anyway, I did call Paul back that evening, and told him he was at Summerside, and he said he'd look after next day, and I said, "Any concerns, please call me." I haven't heard from him. So, as far as I know-
Is that now?
As far as I know, everything's good. Okay. And your Harley Street, that was not our decision to not do it. It was our decision not to send out the tenders in time, I will agree with you there. They shouldn't have, since it was passed in the capital budget, it probably should have been sent out earlier. I can't speak for Scott M., so that's something, next meeting we can ask him again, just, you know, but I think you gave him the reason, it just got piled up. But at the end of the day, the company that heads the bid said, because there's two major projects, that they couldn't do both this year, and that the other one on-
Carrefour.
Carrefour, my word, I got it. Was an easier, an easier one to fulfill this year, and that your project would be first on the go next year. But it's more of the contract that they can't do the work. It's not the city saying yes or no to any one of them. It's just that that's, at this timeframe, is all the contract you can deal with. Okay, thank you.
Steve, could you guys just make sure that Mr. Adams gets a follow-up with this issue on Harley Street? Could you? I know he's busy with Baby Leo, but just ask if you can take a break, so that we- Council Twill, we have other people that are waiting to get in here. Do you have a quick question?
Yeah.
On that issue? Or do you have other issues?
The agreement was, or anyway, it wasn't necessarily an agreement, but the commitment was, Public Works manager was going to give a letter, explain his situation to the residents. That hasn't happened. So, here's what I'm requesting. I'm requesting a letter going to the five hundred residents that live and reside on Harley Street, promise this work would happen this year, and a second communication strategy from communications to a press release, and on Public Works, to inform the community as to why there was, why the delay, what took place, and, you know, I'm not trying to be critical, hard to get along, but really and truly, the tender showed up, showed up long ago.
Yeah, we know that.
And it didn't go out, so, you know, we've got a credibility problem, so there has to, there has to be a communication strategy-
And-
Which consists of, excuse me, which consists of letters to go into five hundred residents, plus our communications, send out a press release to inform the community as to why the work is not going ahead this year.
Steve, can you follow up with that, Mr. Adams? I don't know about the five hundred, but just work on getting something out. Communications, Doug DeMay is actually doing three jobs in one, because we have one person less in the social media portfolio, and then we have another issue with one of our other staffs on vacation. So, we'll work on it the best way we can. Anyway, sister-
Thank you very much. So, we will suggest that the letter goes out to the residents on Harley Street. We'll all work with the gentleman that are filming for Scott, and we'll get a response sent out to him.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council Dumpy.
Oh, yeah. Something cool, thanks.
Council Hushen and Council Ramsey.
Thank you for your report, Council McLeod. Council McLeod, when I was reviewing the binder in the weekend, I noticed in the economic development report that they, and I heard a lady on the radio around Labor Day speaking to this, the indigenous, Miss Peter Paul, or Miss Peter Paul, she's going to paint a crosswalk across from New Library to the Guild. And the crosswalk, why isn't that in Public Works domain? The terms of reference state that Public Works is responsible for crosswalks and that sort of thing. The reason I worry about it is that that's a very sensitive area down there. It's the same intersection in Sir Johnny A. McDonald lot. Sir Johnny A. McDonald, you see various coats of paint, and I see it as a retaliatory place for some other folks to gnar or just ruin artwork, for lack of a better term. So, I was wondering, in that frame of mind, why weren't we the ones who ran the economic what? It's not in economic development's-
Public art is.
Pardon?
Public art is in the domain of-
Cross, she's a crosswalk.
Yeah, that's-
If the crosswalk would, would, no, public art's also in Public Works.
It's a collaboration for both of them.
No, not in Public Works' terms of reference. They have public art in public places, the public art. Anyway, not to confuse things, I just wondered why her, she was dealing with the economic development, has nothing to do with economic development. It has something to do with what you're responsible for, which is crosswalks.
Thank you very much, Council Dumpy, for your question. I believe this, it did not come through the Public Works Board at all. This is done through the staff, ongoing, everyday procedures that Scott, I believe, has approved. Something that they want to do.
Yeah.
Should have came to council, I probably think, and maybe it probably should have, because when we get into that, and it opens up the can of worms, is how do we say no to whatever if somebody wants to put on the side crosswalks? Because there is, according to Scott, you know, Transportation Canada has rules, simply what Council Twill asked for a crosswalk across Houston Street, and said no, because Transportation Canada has certain specifications, specifications. So, I think this should probably apply in the same thing, but it was specifically, when the staff, it did not come to-
It was an operational issue.
Yeah, it was an operational, and it, but it's up to council as to not, they want to see exactly what's being put there before it was downed.
Yeah, there's no resolution for that.
There was no resolution.
Counsel McCain, do you want to add some light to it?
Yeah, no, I was just going to say that we didn't have any really discussion. We were updated at our committee. The mayor mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that this was happening. We didn't have discussion at our committee meeting about any of this, actually, Council Dumpy, and that it did state the Public Works will assist in the actual painting of the crosswalk. So, it was all operational, there was no discussion at our economic development.
Clarifying, clarification that you-
I just want to clarify that we had trouble with Johnny A. McDonald down there-
Correct.
And with this being the other side of the issue, we may have trouble down there. Just warning the young lady that's going to do this, that this could be a very-
This is all part of reconciliation.
Yeah, I understand that.
Reconciliation, yes. Which is-
And I'm not a- And I'm not again, not coming back to any committee for discussion, it's just I'm clarifying that it wasn't brought through our committee.
It's, it's a path forward. Okay, Counselor, do you have some resolutions?
I think you're still missing Kevin.
No, I'm going to wait till the second resolution.
You have to get moving, Counsel Twill, because there's people waiting. But you have three questions, let's bring the resolution, maybe you have something. Yeah, hold on, let's go with the resolution. Go ahead.
Resolution one, Public Works Urban Beautification, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Mike Duffy. Resolve that as per the conditions of the tender on 70 Kent Street HVAC and roof replacement, the submission of entire electrical contractors in the amount of $460,539 plus all applicable taxes be accepted.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel McCain, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Public Works Urban Beautification Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Mike Duffy. Resolve that City Council approves the Kent Street overhead lighting project and that Discover Charlottetown purchase, install and gift the overhead lighting to the City of Charlottetown. And further, that City Council agrees to accept the overhead lighting system to public infrastructure after installation and commits up to an annual $40,000 operational budget for the annual inspection, maintenance of the lighting system and changing out of the light display four times per year.
Counsel Duffy, they took your advice, there is a photo. Yes. There's a photo of the image of what it looked like. Oh, what? A photo. Oh, yes. Part of her package, did you see it? Oh, my. The lights. Oh, yes, oh, yeah, I did, yes, I did, thank you. So pictures a thousand words, Counsel Bernard, do you have a question?
I do, thank you, Your Worship. I'm just wondering, I'm reading through the minutes, I've seen a couple of different.
On this issue?
Yeah, just wondering for one. It asked, it asked some of the building owners to chip in on electricity, cost of electricity development. I just wanted some of the notes that we have in the line of support. They're saying no, they don't want to contribute to that. And so the four that I see here, three of the four are saying no, and one is saying if everyone else contributes, I just wondered, one, what happens there?
So, do you have an answer to that, Counsel McLeod?
No, you have an expert person here to answer that.
Oh, good.
Laurel's been working heavily on this file and the economic development is jointly working with Public Works on it and at this particular point I'll ask Laurel.
Just one sec, do you have another question?
I do, you went to the two of you.
Okay, you're going to do it to Paul.
I'm seeing where, I guess the change of precision, it says 10 to 40,000, so that's 10,000 per time a changeover, or is it not sure?
Yeah, so roughly, we're looking at four schemes for the year as the seasons change and so are the ladies, hopefully. And it's approximately, the staff have calculated that it would roughly be 10,000 each time. And the reason for that, I guess, some of it is that the fact that we don't have all the necessary equipment to do this work, so some of it will be contracted. And that's why we want to make sure that everyone understood that, you know, it is, it is an expense for sure. But at the same time, we want it to be done right too and we don't have the rock and jewels, you know, if we did have a bucket truck on our list for capital budget time and it got taken off, so this is how we could have used the bucket truck rate instead of spending money, we could have, we could have done this type of work. But anyway, so, yeah, it's up, up to 40,000. It might only cost 23,000, came on our, it is to be moved.
Yeah, no, some of the years it says 10, 20,000, some of it says 10,000.
Yeah, but it's up, up to a total of 40,000.
And the last, last question.
You want to add another one to it? Another question for Laurel Lee?
Well, you can go, it doesn't matter. I'm just curious, it says that Discover Charlottetown purchase, install and gift the overhead light to the City of Charlottetown, that's great, I just wonder what that cost is.
Okay, so if you, I'm probably going to give you all those questions because she's done all the work on this one.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead there.
Reverend, Your Worship, so with respect to the first question around the electrical, as you can see in the letters that were provided, Maritime Electric has indicated that they would be willing to provide an in-kind value of part of the electrical costs. Discover Charlottetown has confirmed that if there aren't enough business owners willing to gift that cost, that they would pick that up annually. That is not a barrier to moving forward with the project and there would be no cost to the city with that regardless of the outcome. Counsel McLeod has answered correctly on the cost of the changeovers. The estimate provided by the architect based on the cost they were given for the initial install is approximately $10,000 per changeout. Obviously, that depends on the number of actual pieces that are being changed out at any given time. The manager of Public Works did indicate in the last Public Works meeting that some of the recent costs that we had gotten for an hourly rate for bucket truck rentals were less than what they were quoting on, so he's comfortable that the costs that are provided in the resolution are accurate for the four changeouts that have been requested per year. And then with respect to the overall cost of the project, because there's no contribution being given by the city, we don't have the firm numbers, but my understanding is it's around 100 or 150,000 for the total project.
So you're saying, so the changeout, is that just changing balls, different color balls for different seasons?
So you can see in the package that was provided, there's several different options, so the intent is that seasonally we would change out what's actually attached to the infrastructure. So it could be Christmas ornaments or wreaths that are hanging on it during the Christmas season, it could just be changed out for lights during the winter season, there could be colored balls during the summer and things like that. So depending on the number of actual pieces being attached, the scale of those, whether they're at the same height or varying heights, the complexity of the changeout would obviously impact the number of hours required and the final cost.
Well, that's fine, this last sheet here was saying the total cost is 20, 20.
The architect did that sheet based on two changeouts and Discover Charlottetown had requested consideration for four, so the, the unit cost is correct, the multiplier is incorrect.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. So when we took over the Christmas lights for the city, remember that?
Yeah.
Right? We're responsible for all them, right?
Yeah.
Putting them up, changing them up. Similar deal, correct? Is that right, guys?
Yeah, we don't own, we don't contract.
DCI own the lights.
They own the lights.
Yeah.
No, they're getting sent, they're, they're going to gift them to.
Yeah, everything's going to be gifted, it's going to be like the Christmas lights that we have around the city.
And the gift will be to us, say Merry Christmas. Some of the lights that are within, for Christmas now follow the Public Works, so where they go and whatnot is always done in consultation.
Looks great.
Yeah.
Counsel Ramsey, do you have a question on this?
I had the same question.
Yes.
That Counsel Bernard had, he stole my thunder, I guess, he's just, I read through it too and there's three and four said they weren't going to be in kind with the electricity, so I just wondered what is the next plan? Do we, what does Counsel McLeod say, I think Laurel said too, it's going to be covered under DCI, but not.
Discover Charlottetown.
Or Discover Charlottetown, sorry, sorry. Yeah, so I had to ask my question. So mustn't read the same book, or Counsel Bernard?
It would be the same binder. Any other questions? Ready to go to the question? Questions called. Okay, all those in favor, please put up your hand. Counsel McCain, yea or nay?
In favor.
Counsel Dron, no? Okay. Hold on. Did you get that? Steve, nor did I. Okay, go ahead.
Public Works Urban Beautification Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor Terry McLeod, seconded by Counselor Mike Duffy. Resolve that as per the recommendation of the Public Works Urban Beautification Committee, the price of 25,000 plus all applicable taxes for additional design work completed by Sable Arc to ensure the new city works building is completed on time and that all timelines for the funding application requirements are met.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, you do, just get up there.
Now, this goes, this goes to 25,000 plus taxes. Now, do we have a, you know, does this have to go with the tender or what? Why, why can we just approve 25,000 plus tax?
It's out of the contingency fund, correct?
Yeah.
Correct?
Because that's within the contract?
It's, it's already in the budget, it's just a, we're shifting the money. And we have to get a resolution from council to do that. So it's already there.
Okay, man.
Correct?
Yeah, we're taking it from, from somewhere else.
From the contingency.
Yeah.
And this is to provide additional funding for the architect.
Yeah, for the, yeah, for the architect, for their design services. So there was a few things that were outside of the scope that they had to do additional services for. Partly was, was the funding for FCM, so they had to do some modeling for the new building and they also had to find and manage a commissioning agent for the building.
Okay.
A few other steps in there.
Retaining wall and.
Yeah, retaining wall, we, after the fact, in the additional scope of the project, wasn't further retaining wall and an emergency generator.
And good things.
These are the changeorders. Okay, question? Question? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Contrary? Okay, Counsel McCain, yea or?
In favor.
Okay. Environment, thank you, Steve, thank you, Joey, thank you, Your Worship. Counsel, so Counsel McCain?
Yep, ready to go.
We're ready to go.
Okay, so we'll be economic development tourism and event management committee met on August 28th. The open access will be included in your package. A little update to share, staff is preparing to host an economic development micro summit as part of the upcoming Atlantic Mayor conference being hosted in Shellabank, October 21st to the 23rd. Staff will also currently exploring the possibility of reintroducing the annual newcomer orientation sessions that have been traditionally held in the fall in conjunction with the PEI Association for newcomers to Canada. The city's final civic event of the summer, Cinema Under the Stars, was held in partnership with Confederation Center of the Arts from August 31st to September 1st. Despite being cut short due to the extreme weather, the event was well-attended and well-received. The tourism and event management team looks forward to hopefully moving the event back to Victoria, the Culture Pavilion in 2022. The planning partnership has commenced their work on a new public art plan for the city. As part of the initial stage of consultation, stakeholder interviews will be taking place. Should you receive an invitation to participate in this interview process, I encourage you to do so. And the attraction efforts have also increased greatly with the lasting of COVID travel restrictions and the maturity in-person business. There will be several good news stories announced in the coming months. The tourism event management team has been working closely with Event Atlantic on the creation of their strategic plan, which will be unveiled during the event, Atlantic Summit Halifax this fall. Unfortunately, we received notification late today, but due to the increased COVID cases within our province right now and our data privacy, the Shawfish Festival that was scheduled for later this week has been canceled. If there's any questions, let me know about Santa Fe, we, we staff are there too.
Thank you, Counsel McCain. So the.
Shallow news, Your Worship.
The Shawfish Festival has been canceled.
Yeah.
Jeez. Yeah, like one breaks after one.
And no, no date, it's 2021, it's done. Too bad. Counsel Twill.
At the last economic development committee meeting, there was a presentation made by the executive director of the Downtown Business Association. While she was here, I took the liberty to bring up the parking fees. Given the standard of the parking fees is mandated by this particular committee. So I indicated to the executive director of the Downtown Business Association that I would not support an increase in the parking meters because of the challenges and the continuous challenges that downtown businesses are having with respect to trying to conduct trade and commerce. So I don't see that here in minutes, nonetheless, that was a discussion that was taking place and I want to further, further reinforce what I stated at the committee level that I know Counsel McCain, you and the CAO for the City of Charlotte, Peter Kelly, met for Downtown Business Association and I wasn't aware of that, but nonetheless.
Counsel Twill, can I just interrupt? The information you're discussing, that was a closed session, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was a closed session. It was a closed.
Yes, it was.
Yes. Well, no, but you opened it up and you, like.
I thought it was an open session.
No.
So anyway, okay, fine.
Well, that's not fine, I, I don't know what to do with it because that was, that was a closed session and the chair, chair, correct me if I'm wrong, did you not close the session to have her in?
Yes, we had a closed session for her to come in and speak.
Speaking of, this is a matter of eyebrows.
Under the closed session, anyways.
No, I can talk about parking fees in an open forum.
Not, 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 not reference a report that was.
That would be something we can bring back to our committee to talk about in open forum, but we can't talk about that specific meeting in an open forum right now. And I did to clarify.
We're not supposed to share those, anyways, keep going.
The meeting with the CAO and myself and downtown Inc. staff is just an initial conversation, Counsel Twill, to try to figure out some solutions for, for the issue because we have agreed to, to work with them.
Anyway, so having said all that, okay, I just want, want to reference saying that I'm not in favor of an increase in parking fees, to increase the parking meters, whether it's now or two months time, whatever, I think we should put a freeze on it for the next couple of years.
So just.
So anyway, I just wanted to bring that issue to the forefront.
Is there any, anything that you want to bring under the open session in the minutes?
Parking meters.
Is not in the open session, it wasn't in the open session.
It wasn't even on the.
I think we'll add it to our meeting, one of the exhibits we're asking to conduct.
I just want to bring that to the forefront.
Any other questions?
No.
Any resolutions? None. Okay. So Counsel Twill, you're the next one to give your report.
Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you, Laurel Lee.
Q. Monthly transit ridership for August 2021 was 46,322 compared to August, which was 2020, the ridership was 34,721. The city's transit system is currently maintaining a 79% of its pre-pandemic ridership, monthly ridership from high school participants in a student transit project was 455 this month. Rooted in art celebration of Charlotte's beautiful urban forests, the initiative allows participants to see trees through the eyes of local artists, observing and interacting with these essential assets in new ways. This year, rooted in art, will, about six temporary tree-inspired art installations created by island artists. The artworks will be on display September the 11th, 25th, 2021, and a map of locations can be found on the city's website or social media channels. There will be a community event on Sunday, September the 19th, two and four, at King's Square, where residents can interact with the participants and the artists. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? There is one resolution, Mr. Q?
Yes.
Okay.
Environment and Sustainability Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill, seconded by Counselor Terry Bernard. Resolve that Island Coastal be awarded the Charlottetown Perimeter Highway Active Transportation Corridor Phase Two Tender for 987,759 plus applicable taxes and that this property, this project be costured 50/50 by the City of Charlottetown in the province of PEI with approved funding from the PEI Active Transportation Fund. And further, that this project be fully constructed by June 30th, 2022.
A good news project there, Counsel Twill. Phase two.
Questions, Joe?
Questions called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Counsel McCain, yea or nay?
In favor, in favor.
Is that it, sir?
Can I ask a question, Counsel Billy?
Yes, you can, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much, Your Worship. Thank you, Counsel Twill, for your report. Indication from the active transportation pathway going toward the airport there where it just stops and ends. I think there was some commitment this year that we were going to extend that because it's a safety concern, right, as you're going toward the land road there, it just stops and bracket one road and the city's part of the, city's part of the land there. Just as you go, it just stops on the right-hand side issue of there and I have got a call And I have got a call, but I can't remember, I don't know, maybe under active transportation when it was being discussed. So as you're going over Brackley Point Road, it was an active transportation and it just stops.
Is that one of the towns, but it?
Yes, it is.
I think it's their property.
It's, it's on the airport property.
It's on, it's on.
I know the one you're talking about. We have a sidewalk that goes out to the plane subsidy.
That's not ours, then, right? That's the problem.
No, that's our sidewalk.
I thought so, yeah, sidewalk case.
And then it stops.
Right.
And then there's no pathway attending it up to Vogue optical intersection, it starts again.
Right, so I guess under Public Works, I could ask that question as well, but I'm just on your.
I'll, I'll come on.
And just see where it is, anyway, it should be done because it is a safety.
Yeah, that's good.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Glory, may I interrupt, your worship?
Yes.
So the, the section that Counselor McCloud is speaking of is part of this phase two project that will connect from the Brackley Point Road and the bypass highway. It'll extend out to where the existing trail starts at Maple Hills Avenue.
At, at where?
Maple Hills Avenue, so that, that, that property, yeah.
Really?
Did you read the comments? That is not there. Six of it, as far as this project we did pass.
Yeah.
They will want to be there.
They'll want to be possible. Right on.
Good, thank you very much.
Good, good news, more questions. Good to ask questions. The environment is, okay, next one is strategic priorities.
Thank you, your worship. We met September 3rd, the minutes are in your package. There's one resolution and I have a notice, a motion to amend the procedure by law. And that's a verdict. Any questions, I'd be willing to answer. As per section 863 of the MGA of PEI, this serves, this serves as a notice of a motion to amend the procedure by law at the next regular council meeting. Because you need a month, I guess.
Gotcha.
Okay? Because there's a few things, as you and all, your worship, that we went over.
Yes.
That we're, we as a council are going to meet in a month, I believe, just so, just to clarify. Any other questions, I'll be pleased to answer them, there's one resolution.
Okay, Richard. So you have lots of water, Richard?
Just had to drink, your worship, thank you.
Drink what, Richard?
Water.
Okay, good, just wanted to confirm that.
Strategic Priorities and Intergovernmental Cooperation Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Bob DeRome. Whereas a healthy professional news media is essential for the proper functioning of civil society and democracy at the local, regional, federal, and international levels. And whereas the Public Policy Forum declares on its website for 2017 report, the shattered mirror news democracy and trust in the digital age commissioned by the federal government that real news is in crisis in this country. And whereas the U.S. Federal Communications Commission, FCC cited eight critical information needs, the media help to provide including emergencies, other public risks to health, education, the environment, economic opportunities, civic and political knowledge of political initiatives, and the conduct of public officials and candidates for the office, the shattered mirror, page four. And whereas Canadians have lost the central services provided by roughly 2,000 media workers in 100 communities across Canada due to layoffs and only six weeks from the time the COVID-19 pandemic began, the time it became clearer to the public how important it is for Canadians to receive accurate information. And advertising revenues have plunged, promoting an emergency $30 million advertising buy by the federal government. And whereas residents of 190 Canadian communities lost 250 established news outlets due to the closings or mergers between 2008 and 2018. And whereas two-thirds of Canadians agree or somewhat agree that because of the coronavirus COVID-19 outbreak, the federal government should treat widespread media bankruptcies and layoffs as an emergency, according to a NANO's research poll of April 2020. And whereas the federal government allocated nearly 600 million in aid for Canadian media over five years in its 2019 budget, including a 25% tax credit for newsroom salaries, 15% tax credit for digital media subscribers, and charitable tax dues for nonprofit news outlets. And whereas Canada's federal government acknowledged its 2019 budget, page 173, that a strong and independent news media is crucial to a well-functioning democracy. And whereas at least 25 municipal councils in seven provinces have already passed resolutions similar to the one proposed below. And whereas the Prince of Rhode Island news media have been instrumental during the COVID-19 pandemic, ensuring local citizens have accurate local information. Therefore, we have resolved that council recognizes that a healthy professional news media is essential to proper functioning of democracy in our city. Urges nearby municipal councils and across Canada to recognize that a robust news media is essential to the proper functioning of democracy in their jurisdictions. Endorses legislation and regulations to support and rejuvenate news outlets across Canada, and urges the federal government to move quickly to pass legislation to ensure an ecosystem for a healthy news media to serve all Canadians. And that the resolution be forwarded to the area municipalities, local MPs, MLAs, and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and Federation of Prince of Rhode Island Municipalities.
Richard, thank you very much. Question? Question's called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Counselor McCabe?
In favor.
That's an argument, you have a.
Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. Finance, Duffy.
Thank you, your worship. Our committee met September 8th, and the minutes from that meeting are in your pockets. We don't have any resolutions, but there's some resolutions come forward through all night, through the, through the committee. Your worship, before I sit down, I think all council received some emails there on the weekend regarding the Enterprise Fleet Management Resolution that got passed at the special meeting of council, I think on the 23rd of August. And I guess I'm just kind of curious on how that happened. I know it was on the agenda for a discussion. There was nothing there saying that a resolution was going to be passed that night, so I don't know if everyone agreed to put it on the agenda that night. And I'm just wondering how it got there, who recommended, what committee made a recommendation that that moves forward. So kind of silly, I guess, to ask myself a question, but in light of emails that we all received on the, on the weekend, I'm just looking for a little bit of clarity on how that all unfolded.
Yeah, so that meeting was on August 23rd, and we did have Public Works into give an explanation, I believe, it was Steve McFagin. And a resolution came off the floor. That's where, that's where the resolution came.
So was that voted on because you need like unanimous consent of everyone in the room to add something to the agenda because that resolution wasn't on the agenda?
Good point.
It was on the agenda.
Wasn't at the resolution.
No.
It's not the resolution.
It was on the agenda.
Yeah, just to discuss.
I never, I never received any emails on the weekend.
I didn't get an email.
Just one second, go ahead.
I'm Duffy.
Do you want to finish?
Yeah. No, I just, I just want to say, it wasn't on the agenda. On the agenda, it listed three or four resolutions that were going to be voted on, and then it had discussion items.
Right.
So there's no resolution there to deal with, with the Enterprise Fleet Management contract.
So are we suggesting that it goes back to finance?
Well, your worship, with all.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, with, with all due respect, I mean, 30% of the council wasn't there that night. It would have been nice to, I know business goes on, don't get me wrong, but it would have been nice to have everyone in the room. I still think there's meetings going on, I still think there's questions that have to be answered. So I, I'm just not sure why it would have got rushed through, it's not like we're behind a vehicle the next day. So I'm just a little confused how that process all unfolded because I thought to get something on the agenda, a standing committee would have to make a recommendation, and I don't think that's.
And that's true, that's another.
And like I said, it wasn't on the, it wasn't on the agenda, so if a resolution wasn't passed with unanimous consent, I don't know how it would, how it would get voted on.
And the recommendation didn't come from finance?
No.
So. So just before we do go to the discussion, it is going back to finance? That's my understanding.
Your worship, is it? What would be nice is, is if that, if it's coming back to finance, that we start it all over again, basically, so we were seeing the, the resolution from the 23rd of August. If you want to take it back to finance, with all the information, finance can, can look at it there and we can make a recommendation to the council. But I think, to be honest, the resolution should be rescinded, go back to the committee with all the information and then make a recommendation.
Your worship, could we ask for assistance from the? Yeah, I, I think she'll give a similar background.
Honestly, I don't know the, I don't know the facts of, of the matter, but typically you guys would follow your own process in terms of making something forward, and, and your bylaw does say that in order for something to be put on the agenda, it does require an unanimous vote of the members present, if it's a late addition to the, to the agenda.
But it was on the, it was on the agenda.
The topic was on the agenda. No resolution.
I think the idea.
That's, there was no resolution, it was just Enterprise Fleet Management proposal, that's all it was, but there was no resolution that was.
I think the, the idea of, of having the resolution be on specifically on the agenda for a special meeting is so that if a counselor is going to try to attend or not be able to attend, they'll know what it is that they are potentially not going to be there for. So that's why the specific notice of, you know, to the public and to, and to counselors is there. That's my understanding, but obviously if somebody wants to.
No, no, that's a good point.
To ensure the facts are, are accurate, we can help you out, pardon me.
If, if a target agenda to be discussed, and it wasn't discussed, and then it was a resolution, but before it passed, because we discussed it, you're saying you can't do that?
So. So typically, though, there would be a motion that would be put on the floor.
And there was.
Which it was.
And it was.
Was it voted on to, to put that resolution before council?
Yes.
Yeah.
We voted on the resolution.
No, it went, the motion went to the floor and it was seconded, but I don't think we voted on whether we could put it to the floor.
We voted for, for three. On the resolution? Yeah.
But that wouldn't be unanimous consent to council.
To put it on the agenda, that's two different issues.
Two different, two different questions.
Yeah.
That's my requirement by law is and the process that's supposed to be followed for late additions.
But tonight, for example, if we just decided to make, to put forward a resolution and vote on it right here and now, would it be a valid resolution voted on?
So council could decide to bring that forward and unanimously vote to bring it forward and then vote on the resolution, yea or nay?
Bring what forward?
The process.
The agenda item?
Yes, to amend the agenda to put it forward. So a specific notice of the issue that's going to come before council.
And that was, that the specific issue was for, for discussion?
Well, I guess that's the question, isn't it?
It's the third time.
Whether saying you're going to talk about something or whether you're actually going to put a motion on the floor and add it to the agenda and vote on it, is that the same thing and are they voting in compliance with the bylaw? That's the question you're asking.
I think it happens all the time.
Yeah, but, but.
That's why it's on the agenda.
No, but under the new MGA, under the new MGA, like pre-2018, I remember mayors that sat here, nine o'clock at night, we put a resolution on the floor and, and action, we don't even open the doors. But those days are done, you get 24 hours notice. That's why I, I think I erred in allowing that to go ahead without getting a consensus or unanimous consent to put the resolution on the floor.
But the record was already on the agenda.
Certainly, without having looked at the byline detail, that's generally my sense of how it's supposed to come before, but we can certainly provide you with information to ensure that those things are coming forward in the appropriate way.
Yeah. Counselor.
So if I remember correctly, it's a public meeting.
Yeah.
So it's not like we were trying to sneak something through. Staff presented the resolution, and they wanted to put resolutions put on the floor and it's voted. If not everybody was here, well, I mean, if you're going to wait for it, we won't get it passed, but, but I'm a little confused with Counselor Cody here, Duffy. Your finance manager, you guys must have discussed this at some point, your finance manager is on board with this. He's, he's the big seller of this.
I don't know.
Well, was it not discussed at finance? You're telling me that this has never been discussed?
No, it was discussed at finance. Last time I checked, he doesn't have a vote in this room. So whether he's on board or not is irrelevant.
Yeah.
So yes, it was discussed at finance, but no recommendation go to council. So I guess what I'm saying is, yes, it was on there for a discussion, it was on there for a discussion, yes, that's right. But if, if the public's looking at the agenda, it says at the top what the resolutions were going to be to vote on. That resolution wasn't there, so the public didn't know we were going to vote on that that way.
Sure they did, they were listening to it, it was a public meeting.
They didn't have 24 hours notice.
It's council.
Yeah, I know, but I, I think, you know what, we can discuss this for some time. Let's get the legal opinion on it. Because it's pre-2018, you could bring stuff off the floor. Post-2018, it's a whole different ballgame, correct? It's, it's more of openness and transparency, guys. But your worship, it's all about the procedure by law, and Procedure by Law 20.1 says, notwithstanding section 19, which is another issue I'm getting, of this bylaw, procedure of bylaw. The council shall not vote on a motion arising out of an item added to the agenda by a member until a staff report and recommendation is received from the appropriate standing committee. That standing committee is finance and property. I'm talking about added to the agenda, it wasn't added to the agenda. You remember Karen, Ms. Campbell, you remember the night that there was some movement to do something to, to postpone, I believe, or on the, the Trader Street issue? And so a counselor had put, added the item to the agenda and then attempted to, to have a vote on it, and you explained at the time, although you can add to the agenda, you can't that night, you cannot vote that night, and also the next night you come back with it, you have to have a, an appropriate recommendation, a report and a recommendation from the standing committee.
Which would have been planned.
Yeah, so could we vote or not that night? It says, it wasn't added to the agenda, that's the, on, on the night of the 27th or whatever it was. It was on the agenda.
Well, it's the subtle question, I guess. The subtle question is whether putting a resolution that wasn't included as an agenda item under resolutions means that you cannot add a resolution that you want to pass at the meeting. And I take your point, both of you, that you're saying, well, wait a minute now, it was there for discussion, so why can't you just flip it from, you know, the discussion part of the meeting up to the resolution part of the meeting? That's the question that you're asking.
And that's the question we're happy to answer.
Well. Could we have an opinion on that? There you go. Yeah, let's, let's put in the opinion.
Yeah, because there's other stuff to this, so in commentary though.
Huh?
We've been doing this all along. This is nothing new. What we did there the other night on August 1st, I mean.
That should be done.
As long as the item was advertised, that's going to be on the agenda, council has the power to make the resolution you want. It was advertised, this isn't something I just, I just tried all head and blue, you know, to present discussion, staff made a presentation, this is what gets me a little confused, Jason, was Stephen, you know, the hang of my head with it. I'm kind of in favor, because when staff says it's going to save us a pound of money, I'm kind of in favor, but I said to them that night, if, if this is such a good sale, then why aren't you bringing it to those automobile dealers association? That was the whole justice, because they are a big player in, in PEI, economically or, you know, the donations they make, so we, it's a good idea, so staff go out and have your meeting with them, and maybe you'll learn something and maybe they'll learn something too, and then we can move on with this, and council will be hoping we're not including them. So that's where it went, and that's why the staff.
The staff hasn't met.
Lisa, Lisa was away the first week, so, but staff are, are planning on, on meeting, and then it'll come back. But I'm still curious as to how your chairperson from finance is in here doing a presentation with Public Works, saying it's a good thing. So I'm, I'm good, and it's something maybe you can bring back and find out, but, you know, I know he doesn't vote, but he does, he did follow procedures as far as bringing something forward to the committee, I mean, but.
Let's just get it straight here, the acting finance manager is Nancy McCray, so we're not talking about Nancy, you're talking about Mark, Mark Lanigan.
Steve Wedlock.
Steve Wedlock, he's our control.
The control.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Well, I guess, and go back to Counselor Duffy's comment there, I guess the simple question falls from, on top of getting a legal opinion, what standing committee made the recommendation to council to put the resolution on the floor? That's what you just read, that, that's the process that has to be followed.
It was supposed to come from finance.
The standing committee would be Public Works committee, wouldn't it?
But, but finance makes any money issues go through, has to.
But finance makes any money issues goes through, has to go through finance.
They just look at it from a financial point of view, not from a practical money saving type. They don't delve into.
It meets the budget or doesn't meet the budget. There's a couple of checks, correct?
It's very, it's a very high service.
Okay. Go ahead.
When did this first land on finance's desk? When when did you guys first deal with this?
It's been kicked around for.
Jules?
Three months?
Could be three months.
And we've had three three different presentations. And that's why, to me, the last time the agenda was, the final presentation, discussing. And to me personally, I don't know what the discussions, it's roughly a hundred eighty thousand dollars a year savings for buying local, searching local. To me, everybody wins. And I don't know why people want to hold up, hold up and regurgitate more votes in this council chamber.
An escape clause to a councilor.
There's an escape clause, but just so I'm not sure, you know, it started in June and here we are September.
Yeah. But it kept getting bounced around. Counselor revert. And then we're going to sum it up.
Okay, thank you, worship.
Karen, you good?
Here's all the debate. Honestly, I don't understand why it seems a bad thing to go back to to our legal counsel to ask if the process was followed properly. I mean, that's all we're asking. So if the process was followed, then great. If it wasn't, then I don't understand why we're arguing over over something that's so simplistic as to say, let's let's get confirmation on something prior to moving forward in the event that maybe there was a stuff off.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Okay.
Now, wait a minute, sir, because we got a crew out there waiting. Human Resources.
I hear no more, something separate to that. Both don't.
But that issue?
That'll be all right.
Go ahead.
So again, let's talk communication. Again, how come that email that Council Deputy Cody's referring to didn't get it to all of us?
Sure.
And you replied to it.
And then and then Stephen replied to all.
She didn't say it. And it makes us feel like, okay, what's going on here now? Is there a game being played or not? How come the emails aren't going to everybody?
So Stephen replied to all and he added all the councils.
And finally, Steve, a staff member did.
Yeah, so that's.
Nobody from council here.
Yeah, but that thread was all the information that was passed on to us.
Because where did it originate from?
Oh, I know, but we all replied to it. And what they're thinking about the rest of the council, women in council, which we've got all council here now, I was talking about the emails that some council are pretty doing somewhere. So which way are we going to have?
If no one has anything to hide, then let's let's.
We're getting.
Here's what I'm going to suggest. Public Works, we're waiting for staff from Public Works to meet with the automobile dealership. Because that's what I said, if it's such a good deal, why not meet with them? So we're going to meet with them. Will I have to rescind the resolution?
Not yet.
No, but then goes to finance, make sure, because for some reason, you're finding, you know, you're going to have to meet with your finance people, they don't be going to suggest them to go to the meeting. Because that's what's happening here.
Okay. You.
I'd like to say, I would like to apologize right off. I did reply all and I assumed, which I know I should never do, that everybody was included in that email for Council McLeod. So I'm sorry that you weren't included.
Thank you very much, Council McCabe. Human Resources.
Thank you.
Well, I thought we were going to wait. I thought we gave.
I'm not doing that part.
You got it. Finance?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm trying to get, there's a bunch of their ways.
Oh, yes, I see.
I know.
I just look for the updates that come in in the financial situation, the city, or sorry, the cities in, we're looking for those updates. I think that they come.
Yeah, we're going to do them. So they were in last month, we're going to do them quarterly.
Quarterly.
Yeah.
Good. Did you get last, did you get them last month for the first quarter?
I have the copy.
It was in our package?
Yeah.
Okay, but just check your package.
Yes.
Good? Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cody, Counsel Yankoff. Human Resources.
Thank you to everybody. The Human Resources Communications and Administrative Committee met on September the seventh. The minutes are in your package. I do have three resolutions for your consideration. One is on the technical upgrades for the council chambers. One is the new parking policy amendments that you will assume the binder. And the other is hopefully to approve the new Stat Holiday, which is the National Truth and Reconciliation Day on September thirtieth of this year. So if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I enjoy it.
And so is Counsel Duffy. Get his hand up first. Nancy, do you need to stay here?
No, I don't.
You're all waiting. Okay. Counsel Duffy.
Thank you, Counsel Yankoff, for your report. Counsel Yankoff, in the report, it talks about the third resolution being the National Day of Recognition or Truth and Reconciliation. I was at that meeting that day. I thought I thought the consensus of the committee was was wait and see how this holiday type thing, I know we wish to call it a holiday day off for for other reasons, that we'd just wait and see how the province was going to react and and then we'd react from there. So we left it at that. And then we get the package, we had no no further communication. We get the package in here, it is here tonight. So I I've read it and what I'd like to propose, I've 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 thought a lot about this and a holiday on the thirtieth of September to to honor the indigenous people in the in the past that I I believe in. But I think we can do it in a more meaningful way. And I would suggest, and I did go and search out with finance people, what it costs a holiday, what it costs the city city government for a holiday. And I was told it costs in the vicinity of a hundred and two thousand dollars per day. So that would cost the city taxpayer a hundred and two thousand dollars. And the second part of the question is, how further ahead would we be on October first, which would be the following day, if we just simply locked the doors and walked away and went to some of these these various areas that are going to be conducting ceremonies and that sort of thing on thirtieth September? I thought maybe it'd be more productive. You know, people will just spread out and go in all different places on October first. Now, I don't know how far we would progress along the path of learning by just doing that. So after checking in finding it was a hundred thousand plus, a floodwind. So I thought maybe maybe we'd take a different tact on this and not have the day off for all employees of the city of Charlestown, but to invite the elders from either Scottford or Lake Island, some of the elders to come down here and and speak to the staff, that's the staff that we gather, during the business day, maybe from nine thirty in the morning till eleven o'clock, to tell us about their 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 past and their history, their problems and their aspirations and that sort of thing. I think we would be far better served by that than to just simply not place up and go spread out all over the place. So I would hope that maybe we could prefer this to maybe for a week or ten days to see if we could come up with some sort of plan. I'm sure the elders would be happy to come in and to speak on those days to the staff. We could have it in this building or depending on the turnout. So I think it's a more meaningful way and a more profitable way to to honor.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Yankoff?
Thank you. And thank you, Counsel Duffy. Ultimately, it's council's decision if they want to defer something. But what we had discussed in Human Resources was that we would wait and see the direction that the province was taking in terms of this 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 National Truth and Reconciliation on September thirtieth. And the day after we had our meeting, the province came out with their announcement that they were going to solidify and.
Close off.
And, you know, claim that this would be a day that would be a day that people would not go to work and they would be fucked on National Truth and Reconciliation. So that's what prompted then the resolution to come forward to the meeting tonight. But I mean, that's entirely up to council.
Good point.
They want to do it. Yeah, thank you.
Counsel McLeod.
Thank you, Counsel Yankoff, for your report. So I guess, going back to our last discussion, did this go through finance? It's a hundred and two thousand dollars of a bonus spending taxpayers' dollars and we haven't been approved through the parking committees. It's due to bank to finance, but it has. Thank you.
Did we, for Natal Day, did that come out of, did we, when we claimed the first Monday? I don't think it went through finance because it's it's a it's 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 a commemoration of a of a day in memory of truth and reconciliation. And as Counsel Yankoff said, the province did come out and said they will be closing their offices.
Offices, spending our money, versions.
No, no, no. But we're a creature of provincial legislation.
I'm not saying.
And as a creature of provincial legislation, that means that they set up a holiday, like Remembrance Day or Victoria Day, that's something we can follow or not follow. Remembrance Day is actually a day that is in the act. So I don't think it was recalled, I don't recall Natal Day going through finance.
But worship, this is the first time, you know, this is the this is the first for, we've had a couple of Natal Days.
Well, what has happened over the last year has been the first two.
Yeah.
We've gone through a lot.
No, but this is the first day off, as was Natal Day was at one time.
Right.
First day off. It used to be you worked through.
Right. Right. But it it never went through finance. I think it came right to council.
They didn't do it back then through finance.
No.
Your worship, if I may, I don't think it goes through finance because it's not an additional cost.
No.
It doesn't increase the budget in any way. It's a it's a day off. Depending, normally working that day, which is not extra money to finance budget. Not what you want with money.
But anytime you're spending money, budgeted or not, it should go through finance.
Yeah, well, it again.
Everything should go through finance.
Yeah, well, that's an argument today, but tomorrow could be different.
That's the argument we got from our lawyer, right? So if we're doing it for one, we should be doing, I'm just saying.
No, no, no. Legal counsel told us.
It's not extra money.
I don't even care.
It's not new money or not extra money. The budget stays the same, whether you have the holiday or not, it's all the same.
Counsel Duffy, I know where you're coming from, but we're in a process of reconciliation. You have to understand that we have issues that go back twelve, thirteen thousand years. There's been a lot of corrective action taken, has taken place in this country over the last twelve, fourteen months. I think what Counsel Yankoff is proposing is part of that process. And I agree with the counsel.
Well, your worship, we could fall back on on the argument that you can't bring an item to council and have the vote taken the same night. So that's where we are here now. This wasn't, this is in, it's not in the minutes. It was in the closed meeting, part of the meeting, you have no minutes to back it up. So we're in this, you know, this part where you're, you can be on the agenda, but you can't, you can't, because if you want to surprise everybody with an item added to the agenda.
Okay, so you want to refer to a special meeting?
Sure. And I'd like I'd like some thought put in it, some serious thought, so that the indigenous people and and we here today and our staff can get something out of the day, just rather than spending a hundred and four thousand dollars and have them not attend anything or learn anything. I mean, if we're going to spend a hundred and four thousand dollars to taxpayers' money, we should learn something about the truth and reconciliation movement.
So when you took off Islander Day, when you took off Islander Day, did you plan out with the province what we were going to do for Islander Day?
No, it's a truth and reconciliation.
And maybe we look at whether or not Natal Day is more important than indigenous day.
Anyways, again, we're getting, the procedural part that Counsel Duffy's bringing up, it could be addressed by going to a special meeting, correct?
Yeah, a different a different rule contains to putting things on the agenda at a regular council meeting, special council meeting, so.
But it's the same effect.
And that may be, and I hope that's up to you guys, but in terms of, there are special rules that apply to putting things on.
On a special meeting.
We have a special meeting, this is regular council meeting.
Counsel Yankoff, what do you want to do? Do you want to put the resolution on the floor or do you want to?
The resolution on the name of package, since you got it on Friday, it's been fixed, it's been part of the, it's part of the package. So I I'm not comfortable saying what I want to do because it doesn't sound like, there's been a process to follow properly. So I don't know. The package, I mean, it's in there. We got our package on Friday and the three resolutions were there. And oftentimes, we get a resolution sitting on our desk that evening from Public Works. This one here said, three resolutions from Public Works to follow. They weren't our package, so we got them. So I don't know.
Yeah. Let's go with the first resolution.
Well, just a minute, I mean.
You want to ask questions with the minutes?
Well, we just need to get some, like, go through one, it's going to be good.
Yeah, but the resolution for the first one is about amendments to the city hall parking policy.
You asked your, and I'm just saying that if we're going to, you know, I don't know.
Let's let's wait until we get to that resolution.
Your worship. We've got a community. It's not right.
Go ahead.
So we had, so we had the binder delivered.
Yeah.
And then we went through the the opening remarks approval agenda. Okay, so the resolution was in the binder.
Correct.
Which was part of the agenda.
Correct.
Does that, does that not?
Trump.
Yeah. Does that not give us the the?
Yeah, that's what we're going through.
I'm just asking, I don't know, I'm just asking.
It's not the presence of the resolution in the in the binder, that's nothing to do with it. It's the process that the resolution took. It wasn't passed, it said we would wait and see what the.
So the process.
And all of a sudden, we're doing exactly what the, we didn't discuss that the next day, as Counsel Yankoff said, the next day, the province came out and said they were having a holiday. But we didn't get back together again to relive the conversation.
So just one second. So the process is, we got resolution number one. He's going to read resolution number one, we're going to go to resolution two. Then we get, when we get to the resolution on the Truth and Reconciliation Day, we'll have another discussion. Want to read that first one, sir?
Human Resources Communication and Administration Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jason Cody. Resolve that the city of Charlestown accept the amendments to the city hall parking policy as per the attached documents effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Question? Question call?
Question call.
Okay, all those in favor, please put up your hand. Counselor McLeod, Counselor Bernard, yea or nay? Counselor McCabe?
In favor.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Human Resources Communications and Administration Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jason Cody. Resolve that the City of Charlottetown accepts the proposal, council chamber technology upgrade, RFP, to the highest scoring bid, Ivan's Auto Visual in the amount of $85,952.82 plus $6,161.19 and optional upgrades for a total of $92,114.1 plus applicable taxes.
Question?
Question called.
All those in favor, you have a question, right?
Can I clear, can I ask clarification on, so this was the one that no one from the island voted on, or did on? So do we not have the expertise here yet or?
We asked the same thing. We didn't get any, we didn't get any.
Interesting.
What's the, what's the, for a committee?
I think they did the tour around the change of mind. So this was the only thing we got actually on.
So 3D, 3D datacom, is, are they up in Woodward?
I don't know, didn't get.
They just couldn't do it. Okay. Question?
Thank you. Question called.
Okay, all those in favor, put up your hand, please. Raise your hand. Counselor Dryden?
No. How much money are we spending on this? Like, you know, this was $125,000 the last time we were supposed to fix all this.
No, that's the other one, Hartfield Hall. This is a new.
This is three years we've been waiting for this, haven't we?
Well, you should be voting for it.
Wow.
Okay, nine, one.
I never voted for it.
Against it?
Yeah. $250,000.
Okay, you're for or against?
Against.
Okay, sir.
Should be parents.
Go.
Human Resources Communications and Administration Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jason Cody. Whereas the federal government has announced, whereas the federal government has announced September 30th, 2021 be the first national day for truth and reconciliation, National Orange Shirt Day, and a federal statutory holiday. And whereas the government of Prince of Rhode Island, in this year, will observe September 30th as the national day of truth and reconciliation. And whereas Charlottetown City Council does hereby commit to recognize September 30th, 2021 as the national day for truth and reconciliation. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown administrative offices be closed to observe this day.
Resolution's on the floor.
So can I ask a question?
That's why it's on the floor.
Good. So has this gone through finance?
As was said earlier, no. Like, Nadel Day wasn't, went through there either.
I know, but we did things on for 10 years, that's what we, we do them wrong. I'm just saying, what we discussed here this evening is that things should go through finance. And if it didn't, well, then I can.
This is not a financial matter.
Oh, yes, $104,000.
Well, it's a day, it's a day, it's a day off, normally that would have people in there. Counselor.
Thank you, worship. Just to, just to comment on Counselor McLeod's comment. I think Counselor Bernard's bang on. I mean, it's, it's not additional money that we're spending. It's, it's, they're already budgeted. What we're voting on basically is a day off to, for the reconciliation, not having anything to the budget. So it wouldn't have to come through finance in that case.
Counselor Dryden?
Yeah. So, straight, the federal government has agreed to do this, the provincial government has agreed to do this. So why wouldn't we agree to do it? Or, or all provincial federal employees get the day off to recognize the, you know, the reconciliation? And then we're going to try to get people to come to work? Like, is that, does that ever, ever happen before?
I don't know. And, but the point is, is what was raised at our meeting is that the province agreed to it, which they did. We didn't get back to the other committee members, the staff didn't. We followed suit. Islander Day, they took Islander Day off, they made it a, I think it's, it's in the act, Remembrance Day.
Yep.
All the days that.
No, I'll be supporting. Thank you very much.
Counselor Ramsey?
Just a comment. So this is going to be add-on to the statutory holidays?
Our days?
Uh, it's September 30th.
The province is going to make a change, the statutory.
Yeah, so that's going to be another one.
They're going to make the change.
Excellent. Great. So I have a question for somebody, and then we know at that moment.
They plan, Dennis King said that when the House meets, they could change the Employment Stand Act, thank you, where.
Good. Thank you.
So instead of seven, there'll be eight.
Okay.
That's what he said.
Well, he says it's gospel.
Question?
Question's called.
Question's called. All those in favor, please put your hand up. Okay. Counselor McCabe, yea or nay?
I'm in favor.
All those against, please put your hand up. Okay, nine to one. Counselor Duffy opposed. Okay. Anything else, Counselor Yankoff? That's it?
I have one.
Thank you. And now we have, please.
Thank you, worship. Protective Services Emergency Committee met on August 24th, 2021. Minutes are included in your package. Now, there is three resolutions. One was presented today. So if council feels that the resolution should be there, then we can bring it back to later date. But it's asking for no extra monies, that is in the budget. Anyways, we can discuss that when the motion comes. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer. And if I can answer, then two wonderful gentlemen.
I have two resolutions in my bag.
This was emailed.
Did you receive an email from me this morning, Counselor Bernard?
On the, on the, it says, two resolutions, one anticipated. I never set out this for me.
Welcome, chief. How was the first couple of weeks?
Thank you, worship. It's been great so far.
It's great to see you here. Counselor Ramsey?
No, I just wanted to congratulate the chief here, too. You were here last week and all that. And chief, we wish you a long and a great career.
The new chief is yours. You're ready there, Richard. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, your worship. Protective and Emergency Services Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Greg Reber, seconded by Counselor Kevin Ramsey. Resolve that the public works manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any garbage, and other material or debris, clean up and properly dispose of, saying at the owner's expense at the following property located at 76 Douglas Street, PID number 361337, in accordance with the terms for the dangerous, hazardous, and unsightly bylaw of the City of Charlottetown.
Questions called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Counselor McCabe, yea or nay?
I'm in favor.
Counselor McCabe?
I said yep.
Okay, thank you. Second one, sir?
Protective and Emergency Services Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Greg Reber, seconded by Counselor Kevin Ramsey. Resolve that, per the publicly advertised request for proposal, structural firefighting turnout gear, the submission of safety source fire heat in the amount of $93,978, 15% tax included, be accepted. And that this expenditure has been previously approved in the 2021-2022 annual capital budget.
Questions called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Counselor McCabe, yea or nay?
In favor.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Protective and Emergency Services Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Greg Reber, seconded by Counselor Kevin Ramsey. Resolve that sole source purchased of two 2022 hybrid Ford Explorer police interceptor utility vehicles be purchased from Fair Isle Ford in the amount of $57,933.25 each, plus HXT. Total purchase, $133,246.48 be accepted. And that the funding for these vehicles was allocated in the 2021-2022 capital budget.
Question, Dippy?
I have one.
You have a question?
So did this one through finance?
It was in the budget, Counselor, but it doesn't matter.
Still got to be voted on. We spend money on resolutions, should we put one?
That's what we just said here tonight.
I'm just trying to find, get the.
No, no.
2020.
Yeah, it's up to council to defer, or council can vote on it. So someone has to put a motion to defer.
Your worship, just.
Just before you do that, do you have a motion to defer? Counselor McLeod?
Yeah.
Do you want to put a motion to defer?
I'll defer.
Okay. Do I have a second, or?
I'd like to hear the chair say first.
But do you want to deal with defer?
I'll hear you say.
Okay, you'll wait, we'll hold off the second, or did we hear from the chair? Chair, you want to go?
Thank you, worship. Just a comment to Counselor McLeod. Again, we, we voted on this during budget time. So this was part and parcel of the capital budget. And we approved it. They're simply spending the monies that they're rightfully allowed to spend out of the capital budget, not asking for new monies. So council did approve this back in March. So it doesn't have to come through finance, because we already given the permission to say.
Every time Public Works goes to spend money, even though it's been approved, we have to put a resolution on the floor. Some of them are police vehicles, some of them are per se, some of them are public works. But they all have to go through the process, and this isn't going through.
So Counselor McLeod has put a motion on the floor to defer the resolution until it goes back to finance. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I think, your worship.
You're going to second it?
Well, I will, because, and I don't think, I don't think you would through that. I mean, finance is, is to, even though it's in the budget.
Yeah.
Finance makes sure that it was all, all done properly, the tenders and everything. So it really should go back to finance. So I don't think that happens. Just let it go back.
Okay. So you second the defer.
I don't think you need it deferred, you just had.
Well, no, you need it. We need something to defer it back to finance. Referral back to finance. Good. Second. Okay, second by Counselor Duffy. Okay. Question, call the question. Someone call the question?
Questions called.
Questions called. It's a referral back to finance. That's what the resolution that's on the floor. Yea or nay?
But if we agree we didn't follow the process, then we don't need to go through this, this motion. If, if we didn't follow the process, and that's agreed, then we just send it back to finance.
That's all I'm saying.
That's all it, it don't be a motion.
It don't be a motion.
Do you want to put it back to, okay, do you want to go back to finance?
If it needs to go back to.
Yes, just put it back.
Do you want to go back to finance? Yea or nay?
Hold on. It's on the floor here, we're moving on.
We got a resolution on the floor, so we have to deal with the resolution. So the resolution is being asked to defer. Moved by Counselor McLeod, set by Counselor Bernard. That's what we have to deal with. All those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. End the deferral. One.
I think we're just saying, send it back to.
Two. So that's the only two people that are in favor of the deferral. So the resolution stays on the floor.
If you want to follow the proper process, it goes through finance to make sure the tendering area is done properly.
Good.
If you need to defer, it's just if you want to follow the proper process.
I know what.
It goes through finance before they make a recommendation. So if you want to follow the process, it goes back to finance.
Yours, do you want to refer this back to finance?
It was sole source for, Counselor.
Do you want to refer back, or do you want to vote in the resolution? What do you want to do? You're the chair.
You're asking me?
You're the chair.
I don't need one vote, I'm, I bring it here.
Well, let's vote on it.
I'm okay with voting on it, but.
Let's vote, let's vote on the resolution. All those in favor, please raise your hand. In favor of the resolution to expend $133,246.48. Who's in favor?
Your worship, can I ask a question?
No, resolution's on the floor. Resolution's on the floor.
That's what you're allowed to.
All those in favor. Yea, Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Cody, Counselor Ramsey, Counselor Duron, Counselor Reber, Counselor Yankoff, Counselor Twill, yea or nay? Counselor McCabe?
Are you for or against?
I have no idea.
You're for or against?
I'm saying no, because I don't think we go to finance. We always vote on resolutions.
Those who, those who are against, please raise your hand. Counselor McLeod?
I'm not, I'm not against personal.
No one's against.
Process should be, yeah, okay.
But it has to go back.
Make sure the process will follow.
We're defeated.
Put the process there.
But the resolution's passed.
Okay.
Okay. So what's your vote? Yea or nay?
And if you don't?
If you don't vote, it's still a yea. Counselor, yea?
It's still a yea, private.
So, and it's seven to three.
Seven to three.
Yeah, hold on.
Seven to three, good, move on.
Let's go.
Okay, not, not yet.
Counselor McLeod?
Oh, actually, six four.
How come we didn't ask for a legal opinion of this? We asked for a opinion for it.
Well, look, guys, we've been going on this. Counselor McLeod?
We need to get this going in the right direction, Bernard. I mean, the deputy mayor, chair of finance, got up a few minutes ago and stated something didn't go through finance, so we're correcting it. But now, all of a sudden, the next one, we're not. All I'm saying is that things are S-H-I-T show here.
Well, no, we don't say that here. Come on.
I felt that you didn't say.
Yeah. Okay, six four.
From what I under.
Six four.
Can I ask a clarification question while we're on this?
Sir?
No? Yes?
Okay.
I think you have a question for.
Counselor McCain, what's your question?
My question is more of clarification. I'm trying to understand what Counselor McLeod's point is. It's a little hard, we are not in the chamber. But I think the fleet project was a new initiative. From what I'm understanding, is this vehicle purchase was already approved in capital budget. Would that be correct?
Yes, it was. Yeah.
So that would be why the fleet would have to go back to finance, where we've already approved the fleet for fleet, correct?
Yeah, it's approved, six to four.
It's to go back to finance to make sure the process will follow properly. That's the process.
Yeah, but this resolution is six to four to move on.
Your worship?
Yeah.
Could you just maybe request Christine from the department down in the Department of State, you would have a council's.
Yeah. Well, look, guys, what we have to do is just get this through. We've got a resolution on the floor. And it was passed, six to four. Okay, council advisory committee. Is that your recording? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're really Walmart reader, sure.
Council Advisory Committee met on August 27th. Welcome draft minutes, including your package. We had a discussion and some names who brought forward to us from the environment sustainability committee. And we did not send the recommendation through right away, because we still needed some questions answered on the four individuals that they recommended. They circulated those answers through email, so we took our vote through email. So we're here today with a resolution to accept these four names. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
How many is on that board now? Okay, Counselor Yankoff, first of all, thank you for your report. But do we go with 10 or eight?
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Okay. So there was four left.
Yeah.
No, there's eight. There's four still remaining.
There's still four there.
There's four still remaining, and these are fourteen.
It was, it was fourteen at one time. It was, it was fourteen at one time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Advisory Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Mike Duffy. Resolve that the following appointments to the Charlottetown Food Council be approved effective immediately. Megan Adams, Jordan McIntyre, Sean Martin, Samira Mead.
Questions, questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counselor Twill, yea or nay? Counselor McCabe, yea or nay?
Yes.
Okay. That's the only item. Counselor?
Unless there's any, any other questions.
Don't see any questions. Next, is water in sewer?
Parks and Recreation Parks, right?
Oh, I have, oh, sorry, Recreation. Counselor Bernard?
Uh, worship, the Parks and Recreation Committee, as a kind of second draft minutes are in your package, I want to make a point that worship is the seniors' act of living for, has some concerns. Apparently, Kerry Bor, the general manager, had talked space with them and are giving notice that they would like to get more rent, they want to get the going rate. So we had forwarded that on to finance, so there's plenty of negotiations that are through finance. I, I don't suspect that we're going to be, I mean, the idea of the seniors' act of living set up to put them when we built the care facility, was to have an area for the seniors to be able to come about. We have a grant, $15,000 that we give them every year. We have that since, since it opened. I would hope that the finance committee will go favorably on continuing with that grant. If we need to increase a little bit, then do it. You know, council would agree to do that. I think this is the one place, they're a little bit worked up because they're not afraid, they're kind of afraid it's going to happen. The contract, that's expired for two years. They're looking for an answer now. They might be kind of get the feeling of what's going to happen in two years from now, or two months in two years from now. So other than that, we let them know that we did, we are forwarding finance, but we are supportive of keeping it the way it is. And so, other than that, your worship.
One resolution.
There's a number of projects that, if you've seen your, your package, the Victoria Park, Charlotte, the updates on the projects that we're working on now and where they are. So if there's any questions, I'll be there.
Thank you, Counselor Bernard. Any questions?
Parks and Recreation Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Terry Bernard, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jason Cody. Resolve that, as per the recently advertised Charlottetown Area Development Corporation, CADC, request for proposals for the Founder's Hall area boardwalk replacement, the City of Charlottetown agrees to reimburse CADC for expenses incurred for the city's maintenance section of boardwalk to the spirit construction in the amount of $73,439.34 plus applicable taxes, and that the amount of $4,000 plus applicable taxes from CADC for project management services be accepted.
Question. Do you have a question, Counselor Twill? I'm going to ask the question to the chair.
So who owns the boardwalk? Is the City of Charlottetown or is it CADC?
Who owns the boardwalk?
Yeah.
Uh, so, City of Charlottetown, there's a section there that goes through CADC by Founder's Hall that we maintain.
I understand, maintain. Do we own it? Is that what you want?
I asked, if I may.
Go right ahead, there, Counselor.
I asked the Parks and Recreation Manager that just a day back downstairs, and he just said that we own part of it, and CADC owns a certain section of it too, but we maintain it. So any day we treat that, and we look after the maintenance. No, that's what Frank told me, so I don't know.
Clarification?
That's the same question I asked Counselor.
Counselor Twill, clarification?
So, okay, having said that, so we own some of it, CADC owns some of it, so.
I know it.
Do we have a signed agreement on that? What the arrangement is with the Charlottetown Area Development Corporation? If they own it, and we're doing the maintenance, like, this is, is this a boardwalk replacement?
Yes, it is.
So if it's a boardwalk replacement, it's one of the maintenance, it's capital cost, it's capital projects. So what investment, if any, is Charlottetown Area Development Corporation? What are they, what are they putting on the table?
Counselor Bernard?
I'll just see it to the minister. City of Charlottetown and the Charlotte Harbor Authority have collaborated with the Charlottetown Development Corporation, coordinating an overseen replacement of multiple sections of the boardwalk in the Founder's Hall area. One section is maintained by the City of Charlottetown, the other section, they're only controlled by Chi. These sections of
These sections of the boardwalk are aging at 20 years, and 20 years plus, and it's becoming more difficult to maintain as the state level of public use. The overall scope is worth an appropriate removal of the old boardwalk, supply and placement of new grade material, construction of new marine grade decking and sleepers, and reinstatement of surrounding landscape. The city section of the boardwalk, approximately 113 meters in length and 8 feet wide, runs in front of the waterfront condominiums from Lower Prince Street. Uh, option to move to the seaport set. Council approved 110,000 of the 2123 Parks and Recreation budget for this project.
There you are.
So, continue your, continue your minutes.
Yeah. Counselor Duffy?
Oh, I was gonna say, worship, back in the 90s when I was Chair of Parks and Recreation, we built the boardwalk in Victoria Park. And at that time, right from, say, the swimming pool, right around to Beacons Field, the city owns that 100%. Although, CADC did help us, Dave McKenzie at the time, to fund that. Uh, then, you don't have any boardwalk until you get over at the bottom of Richmond Street, kind of heading towards the Southy Cross.
Now, there's a boardwalk around Queen Charlotte Hermes.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not talking at the bottom of Richmond Street. You get yourself over there, right where the proposed 99 unit-
Right.
-fire building. There, the city's involved. And it runs right along there. The only people up to that point were behind the Delta Hotel, called the Delta Hotel. And then, then, CADC and the city got involved with each other after you leave the Delta Hotel area heading east.
Thank you, worship. Okay, Counselor Twill, last question.
So, the majority of the boardwalk is owned by the Charlottetown Area Development Corporation. I understand it's coordination with the Port Authority and the City of Charlottetown, but that's all really good. But this is capital project. But this venue is primarily owned by CADC. That's a safe assumption, isn't it?
Well, what I get here is, is this section-
Yeah.
-that we're talking about,
Yeah.
Uh, is approximately 113 meters in length and 8 feet wide, runs in front of the waterfront condominiums from Lower Prince Street and the seaport. Uh, so, we are responsible for that section. There may be other sections, CADC owns, Founder's Hall, and they gotta, they gotta pay for it. This section here, this is what this is saying.
And it's all by the city?
We're paying, we're paying for it.
No, I didn't say we're paying for it. All I wanna know is, was the City of Charlottetown own it?
The city section of the boardwalk-
City section.
It's right, the city section of the boardwalk, approximately 113 meters, runs in front of the waterfront condominiums.
Could I-
That's the city section.
Can I ask, not, not, but can Parks and Rec do up a little diagram and just showcase what we, down there, what we own, what they own, what we're responsible for, what they're responsible for?
Yeah.
I, I'd like to get a better understanding.
Good idea. Okay, good idea. Okay, question?
Questions called.
Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, please put up your hand. Counselor McCain, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, is that it, sir?
Yes, it is.
Thank you kindly. Counselor, Counselor Drouin, water and wastewater.
Thank you. The Lawrence River Utility Committee met on August 19th, and the minutes are included in your package. I don't have any resolutions for your consideration. But we'd like to, our manager has stated that there was 557 people signed up for e-billing this month, which is tremendous cost savings for the city. And he would also like to encourage our customers to consider signing up on our website through Spy Engage portal, where they can review their bills and usage history. So, if anybody else has any questions, I'll gladly try to answer them or give them back to our manager.
Okay. Yeah, Act and CAO's doing a great job.
Oh, yes.
Leave alone. Counselor Ramsey?
Counselor Drouin, with the meters, are we at 100% of everyone getting them? Or would you know? I, I know I ask this a lot, but one time, I think we're down to close to a couple hundred. So, I just wondered how close we are to having everyone have-
I have absolutely no clue, but I'll-
Are you gonna defer that to the-
Yes, to the CAO.
You're now the manager. Manager?
Thank you. We still have some customers who are not yet metered. It is now less than 200. And there are a few done every now and then. But we still have some customers who have yet to make the decision to switch to being metered.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Twill? You wanna, Counselor Drouin? Yes?
Counselor Drouin, that's a good answer. That's a really good answer.
I'll be honest here, thank you.
Well, no, I appreciate your honesty.
Yes.
Always do. Counselor Drouin, I don't know if you can answer this, but I know our manager probably can, Act and CAO. With the recent announcement in Stratford, the massive development by the Gray Group, approximately 200, 2,000 units, what is the impact of the fact that that major development on the treatment plant Riverside Drive in terms of capacity, in terms of, if, if, if there's more infrastructure dollars that are, that are gonna be required? Will the ownership responsibility be on the City of Charlottetown, the taxpayers of the City of Charlottetown, versus Town Stratford, which pays, helps contribute to the operational as opposed to the capital? And have you, sir, had an opportunity to review the magnitude of that project? And, and what, what it means in terms of operational and capital for the treatment plant Riverside Drive?
Great question. Great. Richard? What do you think?
Your worship, I think it's something you should come back to the committee and allow me some time to review.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Richard. That's a good answer. Your first, I, I know, Richard, you liked the other guy. Don't worry about that. We're, we're doing on that.
I like Richard's time.
No, no.
Oh, Richard's been around.
He's good. I think fair enough. I'm gonna pass you, I'm gonna pass you a document, and say, right now, the waste coming is 7% over waste, 78%. And this project is 23 years.
Now, stop, that's huge.
And we'll be building on it, because we'll be looking at Cornwall, too.
Who's paying? Who's paying the show?
Federal, federal, provincial government. Thank you, Richard. What time will we, Richard? 7:57?
7:58.
Okay, anything else there in your report, sir?
No, great, thank you, 20 years.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll get a name call.
I know, but we have to get over this meeting. Um, do we have to go into a meeting? I know, but for going into the closed meeting, we're not, we don't need unanimous consent to extend, because this meeting is ending. Okay. I need a motion under, Richard, do you have it there? Under motion to go into closed session, what section?
Section 119, 1A and D of the Municipal Government Act of Prince of Rhode.
1AB, closed, and moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Bernard, to go into closed session. All those in favor? Okay, so we're in the closed session.
Yep, to ensure that any staff that may be on the phone, they-
I don't know, we have any staff. I'll check there. Can you check there, Act and CAO?